Okay, we're gonna do that. We're gonna, I call for, are you, please join me for the place of ladies.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call.
Supervisor Aliaga.
Here.
Clerk Newbeck here, Treasurer Brown.
Here.
Trustee Morocco.
Here.
Trustee Alamothu.
Here.
Trustee Ritchie.
Here.
And Trustee Tetter.
Here.
We have a form.
All right. We have a bottom public announcement. Oh, excuse me, yes, I need a motion to approve the agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda by moving item H1, Presentation and Reports, before the, before G1 Public Hearing.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, now we can go forward.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right. Now Board and Public Announcements, anybody on the Board would like to?
I have a few.
Yeah, okay, Carrie.
I wanted to remind everyone that Oakland County Parks has Military Appreciation Month. In observance of the Military Appreciation Month, Oakland County Parks is recognizing individuals who have served and/or are currently serving in the military with a recreation voucher to use at their parks. This includes one free night as a campsite, one free water park admission, or one free entry into Holly Oaks ORV Park. More information can be obtained on the free voucher through our website under the News section. Also, I want to announce that the Annual Angels Place Race will take place, will be the 17th annual, will take place on Saturday, May 11th. The races will begin at St. Dan's Church and will include a 10K run at 9:15 a.m., a 5K run, walk at 9:30, and a one-mile family fun walk at 9:45 a.m. Please be mindful of the runners and walkers if you're traveling in this area for the event. That's all I have.
Okay. Oh, you, okay, Trustee Morocco.
I just want to let everybody know, next Tuesday, the 14th, is the Bailey Open House with the Clarkston Construction Tech Program. For anyone who hasn't seen the house, this is to show off what the kids have done through this school year. And also, the Chamber of Commerce Food Truck Rally is Friday at Neiman's Parking Lot. They said they have 19 trucks coming this year, so that's, that's next Friday.
Good.
So, that's it.
But thank you, Sam. I got something to announce today. I got a letter from the Municipal Association of Municipal Clerks, and we has, we are pleased to announce that our clerk, Carrie Newbeck, has made the program criteria. She has obtained a Level 3 Michigan Professional Municipal Clerk Certification. I want to congratulate Carrie and thank you for your service. Thank you, please. Also, I want to thanks our DPW Director, Dave McKee. I got a nice letter, a couple of phone calls from people, that he has been doing an outstanding job. During the past weekend, on Sunday, somebody told me that they called DPW on Sunday, and he answered the phone, and he did a both and beyond to serve and help our community, and does something very nice, and I thanks him, Dave McKee, for his hard work and dedication. Also, last night, it was unfortunate, my wife ended up, she have a stroke, it was really hard for us, and I want to thanks the fire department. I called 911 last night, they came to my house right away, and then they helped me last night, and she's doing okay right now. I want to thanks the Board members for their support, and people in the community for their text messages and support, I appreciate that, and please keep us in our prayers. She's doing a little bit bad, it's difficult for us right now, but I appreciate all of you, and thanks for, for your prayers and everything, thank you. Everything else? Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on, public comments. A member of the public would like to stay and come to the podium for five minutes, please? Say your name and address.
Good evening, everybody. I'm a little hoarse, I don't know why. My name is Barb Palata, I live at 5445 Rich Trail North in Clarkston, and I am honored to be in front of all of you today. We have something in common, every, all eight of us are going to be on the ballot in August, and I'm here to announce my candidacy as a Republican candidate for Oakland County Clerk. It's been a whirlwind, I've been doing things I'm not used to, but I can honestly say it was my experience in this township that made me prepared to run for county clerk. It's not too much different from what our clerk does here, it's just bigger. But all the fine tuning I got from here, and I owe it to the public of an Independence Township, and I think the fact that there's eight of us sitting in this room, and probably more in the audience, that are going to be on the ballot, that is a testament to the type of people that live in this township. We are truly dedicated servants, and I just want to know that. I appreciate all of you, and wish me luck, because I'm gonna need it, but thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Good luck. Next.
Hello, my name is Jessica Spencer, and I live at 6270 Walden Woods. I am the daughter of Joe and Debbie Neff. I know those names probably don't mean much to you, but my parents fell in love in, they were 13 and 15 years old, and on my mom's 16th birthday, my dad gave her this ring. My mom, my dad asked my mom to marry her, and she said, "Are you crazy? I'm 16 years old, I'm not getting married." And so, she kept the ring, and he kept his promise to marry her. They got married three years later, at the ripe old age of 19. And so, they raised my older brother, Joey, my little brother, Jeff, and, and myself. My parents wanted the absolute best for us, and to them, the best was Independence Township. The best community, the best schools, the best opportunity for their three kids. So, to be able to afford a home in Independence Township, my dad worked two full-time jobs. He was an auto repair mechanic on afternoon shift, and then a diesel mechanic for Smart Bus Company on midnights. My mom was a teacher at our preschool, and when we got a little older, she, and went to school full-time, she did as well. She put herself through college and then nursing school. Together, they worked so hard to be able to save enough money to move us here to Independence Township. I remember, as a little girl, probably feigning an illness to be able to stay home from school, and watching my mom mop floors on her hands and knees to be able to make enough money to have a down payment. They wanted independence for my brothers and me. And so, in 1997, my parents' dream came true. They bought 5716 Mary Sue. They still live there to this day. Over my very strong objection, we moved here to Independence Township, I was 12, and it doesn't feel like 24 miles south on 75 is very far today, in my always exactly the speed limit traveling vehicle. But when we took the hike north on I-75, my brother convinced me that Sashaba meant a Native American word for the Oregon Trail, because we were moving so far up north that we didn't, we didn't recognize our lives. And so, like my parents said I would, I learned to love it here. My brothers did too, they enjoyed all of the sports that this area has to offer, and I found my niche in color guard. My mom made us dinner from the groceries that she got at Food Town, and when I got a little older, I had a well-balanced diet of Greg's Breadsticks and Cheese Dip, as all the teenagers my age did. And so, as we got older, we really started to have that deep blue and gold that comes with our community. And so, I'm sure that my constant talking in class helped develop some of our most beloved teachers, as they were young teachers, Mr. Rocco and Mr. York. But Clarkston School District was everything that my parents had hoped. We received the education my parents dreamed of. I was one of the first classes to graduate from the new high school, and Mrs. Maher was really kind and never said it, but I'm certain that she breathed a huge, like sigh of relief when the last Neff kid walked across the stage at Pine Knopf. And so, I know my parents dreamed for a good life for my brothers and I, but they could never have imagined the life that is this beautiful, that Independence Township has helped me build. And so, I grew up here, I met the love of my life here, at the Deer Lake Inn, not the new fancy one, but the old one, we don't have to go into all that. I got married here at Bay Court Park, and just as my parents did, I'm raising my three kids here in Independence Township. I found my independence here. My dream is to help others do the same, and that's why I'm running for Independence Township Trustee. Thank you to the Board for all you do to help build businesses, families, and lives like mine. I'm Jessica Spencer, future Independence Township Trustee. Thank you.
Thank you, good luck.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Say your name and address, please.
David Hayward, 6764 Berwick Drive. I wanted to talk about a couple of things that happened at the last meeting. We were discussing the, there was a discussion about the Independence Times, which is a publication that's put in the Clarkston News, and it is, apparently, we're the only township in the View Newspaper Group, which is the parent of the Clarkston News, that has a Times publication. Brandon, Oxford, and Orion, they don't do one. I believe that we shouldn't be spending that kind of money with any news publication. It opens the door for censorship by the paper having to decide whether or not to publish articles or letters that could be negative about the township in fear of losing their funding. The Clarkston News shouldn't be a state-run paper, and I'll, obviously, if we're spending $3,000 to $4,000 a month, it's kind of hard for them to be, I just feel that it's an opportunity for them to not to be able to be as honest as they'd like to be. And I think that we could use those funds elsewhere. I mean, it is 2024, we can do better, and more cost-effective way to notify and inform residents of what's going on in the township other than using the newspaper for that. The second thing was, there was a discussion about photos and articles in the Township Times portion of the Clarkston News, and Mr. Brown brought up the fact, it was his agenda item. So I'm sure he was well-prepared for what he was speaking about, and I'm going to quote what Mr. Brown said at the meeting. "I think back to the 2016 election, the recommendation of Supervisor Kittle, and supported by myself and Clerk Barb Palata, we decided that we would not, as an elected official, write the articles that got put out for our part in July." He spoke about it not being fair, that they would have an advantage over other people running, and then went on to say, referring to regular articles in the time, "I don't think we should write them in July." In 16, we had department heads write all the stuff for the July Township Times. The three full-time electas, elects, or electeds didn't put anything in that month. So I decided to do some investigation. Did anybody on the Board happen to look these things up? I don't know, but I did. So let's go back to 2016, July. Here's Pat Kittle, front page, name, picture, article, and I thought, well, let's go look a little deeper. Here's Barb Palata, which completely contradicts what Paul said. So I said, well, maybe Paul made a mistake. So I went to 2020. Township Times 2020, right on the front cover, Pat Kittle. So I don't know, go inside, we have the Rachel Woffgren, the Treasurer, everybody, nothing's changed. So I thought, well, maybe in 2022, when Jerry Fisher was the supervisor. Here he is, on the cover of the Township Times, July 2022, just before you all ran for Supervisor. So I guess my question is, it was well-prepared, Mr. Brown, that you brought this up to everybody, and either you weren't being truthful, or you didn't remember what had happened. Personally, I don't think either one is right, but I think that the record should be corrected of exactly what happened in 2016, 2020, and 2018, about what the discussions were with Mr. Kittle, and what you all decided about photos and names and articles, because none of the things that you said are accurate. Thank you.
Anyone else? Please.
Hi, my name is Chuck File, I'm running for Township Supervisor. I live in Clarkston, 8508 Elk Run Drive. I actually came here to have a little bit of a say, but out of respect, for the last 24 hours, I would, my wife had a stroke, I know how difficult it can be, I think I would just like to defer my time to some point in another meeting, and just say, God bless, and I hope everything works out.
Thank you, appreciate that, thank you. Very nice, thank you. Anyone else? Anyone online? Okay, moving on. We have, Paul.
I just want to thank Mr. Hayward for correcting me. If I've ever been anything, it's someone who, when a mistake is pointed out, I, I don't have a problem making mistakes, I'm human, and so, I didn't go back and look at that as carefully as I should have. I probably will now to go look and see why I got that mixed up, but I, I certainly respect your willingness to come up and bring that up, and I, and I apologize for the mistake, so, thank you. Okay, by the way, I still think it was a good idea. Whether we did it then or now, I still think that's a good idea, and I think the, the idea behind what I said was a good idea, so.
All right, we have a presentation.
Yes, next on the agenda, if we can have Deputy Rodney White come forward, and possibly Lieutenant Cummins, if he'd like to come say a few things. Yeah, I just thought maybe Lieutenant might want to say a few things in opening, and then I got a presentation to read.
29th, on, 29th of last, last month, Deputy White retired after 34 years of, of service with Oakland County Sheriff's Office, and we had a retirement party for him at the substation, but I, I talked to Clerk Newbeck, and she had a great idea, and, and we're here tonight to, to do that, to present that.
Very happy to honor him.
Yes, we have.
You'd like, I'll read the proclamation. "Whereas Deputy White began his career January 22nd, 1990, as a Deputy 1, assigned to corrective services. He was the first deputy in Oakland County Sheriff's Office history to be a K-9 deputy assigned to the jail. And whereas Deputy White was promoted to Deputy 2, assigned to the Road Patrol in November of 2011, he was assigned to Highland Township, Oxford Township, the Traffic Unit, City of Pontiac, City of Rochester Hills, and most importantly, Independence Township. Whereas Deputy White has served the Independence Township residence since 2017, mostly as a K-9 deputy, with professionalism, integrity, and honor. And whereas Deputy White took extraordinary pride as a K-9 deputy, his two K-9 partners, Kilo and Diego, am I saying that correctly? Were known as an outstanding, were known as outstanding Canines that could perform their missions without hesitation. Only a great K-9 deputy could lead great Canines. And whereas Deputy White is known for being one of the most even-keeled and easygoing deputies, all supervisors that he worked for were thankful to have such a great and respected deputy under their command. Deputy White will be missed by everyone at the Oakland County Sheriff's Office, but especially the Independence Township Substation afternoon shift. And now therefore be it resolved that the Charter Township of Independence Board of Trustees hereby recognize retiring Deputy Rodney White for his legacy of service and law enforcement to the Township of Independence and surrounding communities, expressing their deepest appreciation for his dedication and commitment to the citizens of Independence Township, and extend best wishes for many years of happiness in your future."
Congratulations.
Take a picture, Joe.
Yeah.
Anybody else want to?
Well, let's take a rest.
Yeah. Stand in the middle.
Who, who will take a rest for a picture? Okay, for five minutes?
Yeah.
We're back. We have now our first public hearing. Dave? Okay, we open the public hearing at 6:36 p.m. Dave?
Okay. Make sure I got the right, we have two public hearings tonight, so I'll make sure this is the right one. He didn't, it's not labeled correctly. This is what we're doing? Okay. Good evening, everyone. The first, this public hearing tonight, the Department of Public Works has identified an issue in the, in the distribution system, or the drinking water system, a few years ago, that we discovered we had some PFOS contaminants. You know, that's the buzzword that's been going on for quite some time. We took that well out of service, and then with the help of the State of Michigan and Eagle, we've been doing a lot of private well testing and investigating to find out where the source was coming from. So, in to, in order to address this issue, we've also looked at extending water main throughout the township to residents who are in private wells who may, and we have confirmed some that do have PFOS in their private wells. So, one of the mechanisms that we have been using, we've been very successful, and a huge project is going on right now, is through the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund that is set up through the State of Michigan. Essentially, what that is, is a low-interest loan program that gives you, you know, millions of dollars to do a big project, and you can pay it back over many years at a very low interest rate. The fortunate thing, I guess, with the PFOS contaminant, is that the federal government has, has allocated millions and millions of dollars across the country to address PFOS issues. So, for instance, the project that we have going right on was approximately $5.4 million, $5.4 million. We went through the same process, because this was administered through the State Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, it's a mouthful. But with the federal government kicking in on that, that whole project was 100% paid for, it didn't cost us anything. $5.4 million, done. That project is going on right now, and so, some of the folks that, that live on up Harvey are seeing that right now. And we did Church Street, East Washington, put water main in everywhere, and we have funding to connect everyone's home. And the funding, all that came from the federal government. Fiscal year 2025, if we look, this, this public hearing is to, is to another project exactly the same way. There is also lots and lots of federal money that is still sitting there. They have required, or stated that PFOS issues, if you're addressing those, are to be 100% funded. We believe that's going to be the same with this project here. So we have to go through the process of the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund procedures to go through all these processes. The first step that we did, we did some public notification, Clerk's office has been tremendous in helping us with getting the word out, because there's some milestone schedules that you have to make, and the next is a public hearing. Later on, in tonight's regular agenda, there is a resolution. This resolution, I just want to get it out front right now, this is not committing the township to any kind of cost right now, we are going through the processes. These are the first couple of steps we have to do, where we do need Board approval. So I'm going to pass this off, I can give you a little bit, a little bit idea what the project is, so, and I have representatives, we have Laura Grzewski and Mike Lufkin from DLZ Engineering, project managers for this. This project right here, this first one that we're talking about, is we're going to install approximately 27,000 feet of water main, extended through the Sunnydale neighborhood, which is south of Main Street, it's kind of like east of the junior high school, everybody knows where that's at, Paramus is back in there, and then all of Birdland. I say Birdland, I probably saw, everybody, does everybody know what Birdland is? Okay, okay, most people do, but that is on Hummingbird, Chickadee, up in that area. There's no water main there right now, and if you really look at a map of our, it's kind of, it's kind of wild that it's not there, there's water main everywhere around it except for there. We're looking to get funding for that, and if things go as we expect them to go, we would get 100% forgiveness, meaning it won't cost us anything, and put this all in. So that's where we're going with that. That's my, that's kind of like a 10,000-foot view on this. I have, Laura's going to take over right here, and she's going to go through his PowerPoint presentation, give you a little bit more detail on what the project is, and this helps meet our state requirements for applying for this Drinking Water State Revolving Fund loan.
Laura? Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, Dave. As Dave mentioned, the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund is a low-interest loan financing program that assists communities with the construction of needed drinking water infrastructure improvements. In 1996, the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund was established by amendments to the Safe Drinking Water Act. Each fiscal year, Congress authorizes an amount to be appropriated that is allocated among the states. Approximately $132 million is available for FY25 projects, including improving, improving drinking water treatment, fixing leaky or old pipes, improving sources of water supply, replacing or constructing finished water storage tanks, and other infrastructure projects for public health. So as Dave had mentioned, this public hearing is a requirement of the state to apply for SRF funding, so we're going to go, the next few slides are going to describe the drinking water system needs and alternatives. We're going to provide a description of our recommended alternatives with cost, a discussion of the project financing, and description of social and environmental impacts from the project. So this is a map that shows the current township distribution system. I know it might be kind of hard to read on the map, but the blue lines there show the current water lines, water, water mains that exist in the township. There are three main water systems in the township, the pink being the Deerwood System, the green being the Hillview, and the main loop being in the yellowish color there. As Dave had mentioned, and I'm sure most of you know by now, in 2018, PFOS was detected at the Clarkston Gardens wellhead, and then it was detected in 2020 at the Chestnut Hills wellhead. So with those two wellheads offline, those two wells offline, that's a combined of 2.73 millions of gallons per day of capacity that has lost. So it means reduced water supply for residents and businesses, and residents and businesses with private wells in this area could be affected by PFOS contamination. As Dave had mentioned, since early last year, we received some grant monies to conduct private well testing in various areas, starting with Clarkston Gardens and working our way further south to Chestnut Hills areas. We have, of the 47 private wells that we have tested, there were six that had PFOS detections, but all of them were below the current drinking water levels for the state. So I just, this is just a graphical representation, the, this here at the top shows the geographical location of the Clarkston Gardens well and the Chestnut Hills well. All of these dots here represent private wells that are within the capture zones of the Clarkston Gardens and Chestnut Hills. So up, up here along Park Lake, this is the area that Dave was mentioning, this was the first area where we conducted- This was the first area where we conducted private well testing for PFOS. We did not get any detections in that area, but we, the township has been very proactive at making sure that the townships have access to water main regardless, because we know that the the flow of groundwater is heading south, south to southwest. So, this is the first area, as Dave mentioned, we're currently putting in water main, giving folks access to water main in the Park Lake area. And then the areas in the pink, these, so all of these folks are currently in private wells. So, the areas in pink are the areas that we will be, are putting in water main extension, water main areas, if we, if we can get this project funded. This is a table that shows our, and I apologize, it's kind of hard to see. But the, so, as we mentioned, Clarkston Gardens, we, that has been offline since 2018. The township is required to test for PFOS on a quarterly basis, both at Clarkston Gardens and now at Chestnut Hills since 2020. So, outside of the 2018 and 2019, it was in November and February of 19, those results were pretty high. We think there was an error in sampling. But outside of that, the results have been under the regulated maximum contaminant level, which is what you see here on the right in this gray area, this far column here. So, we are getting detections. We're seeing that they're kind of steadying out now, which is good. And we think that the reason for that is because the wells are offline. So, it's not pulling the PFOS out of the aquifer like it was in the past. So, I think Dave made the right move by keeping that well offline. And we've been able to keep that PFOS kind of at a steady instead of increasing. So, this is a graphical representation of that table. So, it's starting to level off, which is, which is great. And so, moving forward, we're going to continue to work with, with the township. And we're looking at some treatment options, both for Clarkston Gardens and Chestnut Hills moving forward, so we can get those wells back online. I will say that, you know, the township has been, with Dave's leadership, he's been very proactive. Those wells do not have to be offline. That was a decision that Dave and the Public Works and your leadership made years ago to do that. And I think it was the right move, because like I said, it's, it's not pulling that PFOS into the, into the aquifer like it was before. So, so if we can get some treatment options, that would be, that would be ideal. So, again, this is for Chestnut Hills. The maximum contaminant levels are here on the, on the right. So, we've been, again, conducting quarterly sampling since 2020. And the levels are lower. And again, they're, they're starting to level out here, which is, which is good. So, we did look at some alternatives as part of this project. The first one would be to provide no action. The second is to look at optimum performance of existing facilities. The, the system is currently running at optimum performance. And due to the shutdown of the Clarkston Gardens well and Chestnut Hill facilities, as I mentioned, we're seeing a capacity loss of approximately 2.73 millions of gallons per day. And this, by going with option two, it doesn't address the PFOS issues that we have for our residents and businesses. A regional alternative would be look at connection to the Great Lakes Water Authority. That is very cost prohibitive and to provide the infrastructure that we would need to do so would take years and years. So, you're looking at approximately $67 million to, to provide a regional approach. So, we are proposing option four, which is extension of existing infrastructure, which would provide safe, high-quality drinking water and increase redundancy, reliability, and water production. So, looking at those alternatives and the costs associated with those, with option four, with the extension of existing infrastructures, approximately $9.6 million. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Mike and he will go into a little bit further detail on the project areas.
Thanks, Laura. Mike Lufkin with DLZ, Department Manager and a civil engineer. Pleasure to be here tonight. I'll walk through some of the project specifics. And if there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer them afterwards. So, as we talked about, the project involves about 27,000 feet of water main installation to bring water main to areas that don't currently have them. Streets affected, Laurelton, Paramus, Middle Lake, Sunnydale, Princess, Evlak, Hummingbird. I'll bring up a map in a second and show you the project areas a little more detail. The goal is to provide municipal water to residents that currently are in private wells, give them reliable, safe drinking water. And then, and for the overall system to increase your water system, distribution system reliability. This is the project map, kind of identifying the areas. The streets in yellow don't currently have water main. And this is where we're proposing to, to bring it and serve those residents. Bordered on the north by Walden Road, on the west at Main Street, on the south at Maybe Road. Again, it kind of surrounds the junior high and elementary school there. It looks like the water system is pretty well set up to serve this. There's, there's connections provided at all the perimeter sites, so that's good to see. Probably a couple of easements we'd have to work out to, to make this a workable plan. But I think the benefit to the residents would be huge, so hopefully we can do something to move this forward. Looking at the cost of the project, as Laura identified, approximately $9.7 million total. This is a breakdown showing the design, construction cost, construction engineering, inspection, some contingencies factored in, since this is very preliminary and we don't have, some of the details we'd need to do a fully refined estimate. We've got some allowances in here. And then, if it were to move forward, you'd need a bond attorney to help shepherd through the financing part of the project. So, part of the, part of the SRF plans and the project plan that we put together requires a cost comparison. And this helps identify, is this a good way to go? Is it viable financially? The interest rates anticipated through the program are about 2.5%. That results in an annual principal and interest payment of $620,000. Currently, that's anticipated would be funded by a current operation and maintenance budget. And capital charges would help replenish the fund as people connect. That's all variable depending on if any incentives are granted, those type of things. We're, just for purposes of estimating, we're looking at a 4% interest rate if you were going to go on the open market for, for bonds. When you compare those two options at 2.5% versus 4%, you've got an annual savings on a payback of $91,000 annually. This is the chart, just kind of showing the overall savings that would be accumulated when you compare the low-interest SRF program versus conventional 4% financing like we had discussed. As far as social and environmental impacts, that's something that Eagle requires us to kind of state in the project plan, look for. We have to submit the project areas through their environmental portal and get some feedback. Certainly, there'd be some traffic impacts due to construction. Most of this is kind of interior on residential roads. So, it'd be a little bit of a pain for the residents on those roads, but the traffic on the surrounding outskirts wouldn't see too much. We're not anticipating a rate increase immediately as part of the project. Like we said, there's potential for some principal forgiveness if you should qualify. So, all of those factors would have to be considered when deciding if you want to move forward and what the impact on rates would be. Most of these areas have already been disturbed, so it's not like we're going through forested areas or undisturbed areas, anything like that. The environmental portal did indicate, though the project is, is not likely to impact the Indiana bat, the northern long-eared bat, and the eastern Mississauga rattlesnake. This is a, kind of an idea of how the project could proceed. January 2025, draft plans and specifications. March 2025, where we'd complete the environmental assessment, have permit applications submitted, plans and specifications be finalized. And then in April 25, we'd be getting Eagle approval. That's when we get our permits and get out for bids, start thinking, start getting actual pricing back from contractors. And then we'd be looking for something in the range of August 25, start of construction. That would be pending contractor having materials ready to go and everything. Depends on the contractor's schedule. November 25 is probably aggressive for a project this size. It would probably, probably go into the following year. But that's that public hearing. We'll have another one following. If anybody has any questions on this specific project, we'd be happy to answer it.
Any questions from board members? Terry?
I have one for Dave. If you could just reiterate the timeframe from the last time, when did you hear from the state? Like, when would we know if we get approved?
So, that was just, exactly that. So, the schedule that Mike just laid out was for like January, go through there. We will know in September, correct? When they're, if the 100% funding or loan forgiveness or whatever we get. They run it through this program, so you have to do all these, like you're going to get a loan. If we get funded for it 100%, like we believe, we still go through the process, but it's going to be money in, money out. You know, it won't cost us anything. But we should know by September of this year whether we are funded 100%. I don't think it would be less than that. I mean, this is, you know, according to the bipartisan, bipartisan infrastructure law, emerging contaminants projects, and this is exactly what this is, are to be 100% funded. So, we will know. We'll know for sure by September.
Thank you.
Good question, Terry. Anyone else?
I have a couple of questions. Dave?
Just in Morocco.
Did all of the money last year get used in the state? That was allocated for this?
For emerging contaminants, no. Matter of fact, we got more. You know, Eagle reached out to us and said, hey, you want some more? I think we got another 600K, didn't we? Yeah. For, we have an emerging contaminant. So, they didn't use all of their bipartisan infrastructure law funding for emerging contaminants. I know, that's a mouthful. Yeah.
Right. And I think I remember from last time we did this, isn't there only, there's not that many communities that have identified this issue and are qualifying for the program, which gives us a little better odds that we would be a better candidate? Is that a true statement?
I, I think so. You know, this is, it's kind of wild that we have PFOS in this area. It's just, it is what it is, but it's, it's pretty prevalent on the west side of the state. News media reports and everything, it's really big on the west side of the state and usually around military bases. You know, Escoda's got a big problem. Because they use it firefighting foam. That's, you know, I mentioned it before, I used it when I was in the Navy. It's covered in it. You know, but...
Do you believe we're going to be able to get these two wellheads up and running ever again? With, you know, a filtration system or some way to get them back online?
There's filtration methods out there right now that remove it, you know? And we're going to go for it, but we want to pick the right one. You know, we're working on different kind of funding mechanisms to pay for that, too. There's a couple of things that we're working on with that. But you can filter PFOS out of drinking water.
And if we do that, that would eliminate the need for additional wells?
Correct.
If we can get these back online at some point? Do you have a projection of years that you would feel, you know, that the technology of filtration would meet the standard that we're...
I wish it was tomorrow, to be honest with you, Sam, but realistically? Two years, three years?
Couple of years out.
Couple of years out. You know, it's, it's, it seems like technology is, there's, there's technology to do it, but without going into a 20-minute conversation about it, it's, it's a complicated process. And I think we're...
It's easy to filter out. The problem is disposal of the material once you collect it.
Because the federal government EPA might, if they consider it a hazardous waste, then, you know, they just change the rules again.
Is there any concerns about the depletion of volume right now while we wait with the other wellheads?
No.
Keeping up with everything that we need?
No, I think that's a good point that I should bring up. You know, we lost 2.7 million gallons a day of production. We're not going to run out of water, okay? I want to make that clear. You know, that we have capacity, but the state requires us to have a thing called firm capacity. So, whatever your average daily demand is, if it's 8 million gallons a day, you have to be able to maintain that by taking your biggest treatment plant offline. You still have to be able to do that to essentially carry the mail during the hot months. And so, people can still water, do that. We're okay. We've been in a good spot, losing the two plants that we have now, or the two wellhouses that we have now. Eh, that's a, you know, that's a shot, you know? We don't want to go there. We're not going to go there. We're going to make sure that we do something, be proactive as much as possible. And we're working on different funding mechanisms to keep that super, I don't want to say cheap, but, you know, the cost for residents, you know, we don't want to pass it on if we don't have to. So, we got a lot of things in the works right now for funding for specifically water treatment. That if things come to fruition, you know, we'll have funding for that, too.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone online that would like to? Come to the podium, please, state your name and address.
April Klein. Do you need my address? 6486 East Lawn Avenue. I'm wondering if you've talked to any of the residents? Are they on board for this? It's a lot to put a whole new water system in.
As opposed to the alternative?
Well, there's other systems that can filter out the PFOS, right? You're talking about going on city water, basically, right? Is that what you're talking about? Yeah. So, have you talked to the residents at all on these streets? They'd rather just do their own personal PFOS? Because we could do those systems in home or going on city water?
Well, what we've done in the past, this isn't mandatory. You do not have to connect. You can do your own thing. You know, the benefit of having public water through there is you're going to have fire hydrants. So, your fire protection is going to go through the roof, you know? Maximum support from the board and the fire chief and things such and those. This isn't...
Okay, yeah. No, I'm saying this is great.
This is not mandatory. You don't have to. You can do your own thing if you want. But if the funding that we get, we will pay essentially for the connection. There's a small fee that the township fee, we reduce the fees, the board reduced the fees to $1,722 to get full connection. And that's just to pay for the water meter.
Okay. No, it sounds like a great plan. I just want to know residents, I just want it thrown on residents.
No, no, no. This is a mandatory type of thing. We're going to put the water main in, restore everything. If you want to connect.
We'll have a public meeting. We had, we had two actually for the current water project. And, you know, because Eagle, if they're going to be funding it, they want to make sure there's buy-in from the residents, too. So, we had two public meetings for the current water main project. Once we hear more in September...
Excuse me. Can you come to my place?
Once we, once we get notification in September, then yes, we will have at least one public meeting. You know, to provide input.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Just to add on, you know, the project that we have going on right now, I think they want to, state was asking about 50%? Yeah, we have, you know, they want to know, can you get 50% of the people available to connect to the new water main? We're way over that, way over that.
Thank you, Dave. Thanks for your hard work.
But it's not mandatory. That's a great question she asked.
I guess if no one else from the public, I will... Sure, please. Come up front and state your name and address, please.
Hello. Okay, Tina Holland, 6292. Glad to say all that.
Yes.
You know what I do.
Yes.
Six, Tina Holland, 6292, Lake Walden Drive, Clarkston, Michigan. The question I wanted to ask, are you involved with the environmental department or anything? They have to say what you're going on to. Do you work together with them, Mike? Do you?
Absolutely.
They're a little scary.
So, when you say environmental department, are you talking about Eagle?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. So, so this project, this program is funded through Eagle. Number one.
How much?
Well, we don't know exactly. We're hoping 100% this project. Well, we would, we don't know exactly. We're hoping a hundred percent this project. Number two, um, as we mentioned in the presentation, we had to, we had to go through a full environmental assessment, preliminary assessment, and, um, that's what we presented on is, is looking at the different social and environmental impacts that would happen, that we would have on the project. Does that answer your question?
Uh, kinda. Uh, like this young lady was saying, too, uh, the residents need to know how much it's gonna cost us. Water's going up and especially, I don't wanna get into politics or anything like that, but, uh, we've got problems, you know, with everything else. So I'm just wondering how much it's gonna cost the residents as well later on.
Oh, for sure, yeah, that, and then we will definitely...
A percentage of?
Once we, I don't know if you wanna speak to that.
It's not gonna cost you a penny to have this installed.
Okay.
If you decide not to hook up, but, but, yeah, it's a loan program, but the federal government pays our loan off for us.
Well, somehow...
And that's what happened with this one, a hundred percent, so there was no cost.
Okay.
That's essentially...
That's, you answered it. Thank you kindly.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone from the public? Anyone online? Okay, I'm gonna close public hearing, uh, presentation at seven oh six. Thank you. Next, we have also Dave, here again, we opened the presentation at seven oh six. Welcome back.
I'm back.
Yes.
Next one. Let me get this queued up here. This is it, okay.
Just have to keep all these acronyms correct.
I know. You know, it's, yeah, yeah. Wait a minute, is this the right one, Laura? Okay, I just screwed up. There we go. Okay, so this project here, this is a, another water main project. Very, very similar to the, to what we just talked about with a couple of exceptions. So this is for, to, uh, the project overview on this one is to install approximately eighteen thousand feet of water main on the following streets. Waterford Road, Center Road, Williamson, Echols, Gaiet, Winell, Heath, Frankwell, Drayton, and a section of Pelton. Currently, there is no water main at all on any of those streets. Again, the goal is to provide not alone, not only fire service protection for all those streets, but also to provide safe drinking water in there. So we're going through the same process as we just explained, through the state drinking water, state revolving fund. This project is under, uh, um, not PFAS, I wanna make that clear. The water quality of the groundwater over here is terrible. The health department for Oakland County has written support letters because private wells are under the jurisdiction of the Oakland County Health Department. We don't have anything to do with them. They have asked us many times, since I have been here, you know, are you ever gonna put water main down there? The water's terrible. Uh, we've had residents call. I've done some service lines that are, you know, not out of the norm that we would do to get people some water because their, the groundwater over there is really bad. There have been some instances of leaking underground storage tanks years ago. I think it was a dry cleaner, if I'm not mistaken. At the corner, maybe in Sashaba. I think it was a dry cleaner, but way before my time here, but it's gone out there. It was bad. So we, we wanna address that as well. So this public hearing is for that project. Now I wanna touch on funding for this project. So we're going through this process here. We're kinda got two funding sources we're working on. There's this one here where we will get the loan. We will get the two and a half percent loan to pay for this project. And we will pay it back over time with rates, you know, it's, you know, people, user fees, we pay for it. Again, we really don't anticipate costs going up to pay for this, you know, but again, there'll be public hearings and public meetings to address all that as time moves on and we get closer. The other funding source that we're working on, and I'm, you know, I'm gonna bring it up, the, I don't think, we, we got notification today that we applied through the state representative Lisa McLean.
US.
Or, or US representatives, sorry. Lisa McLean's discretionary community funding for all of this project. We did notification today that she selected our project for funding. Now, that's, it's selected. Now, there's a process that needs to go through. It needs to go through the state, or, I'm sorry, the federal, the House and the Senate, and the president signs off, okay? I, it's, I believe it's gonna happen, you know, I haven't seen one where they ex-nate a project out of there. We asked for five, four, approximately five point four million dollars. Now there is a match. There's a twenty percent match to that. So if we get funded, we should get three, four, three, five, and we will match twenty percent. Twenty cents on the dollar, I'll take that all day. To do this project, I'll take it all day. So that is a funding source that we, right now is on track to happen. In case something happens there. We're gonna go down this route as well. Again, this, this, this route of getting a low interest loan through the state, um, is the way to go. If, it's not, we're not making any commitment tonight. If everything goes through on the federal level, we get the funding, we drop this, we stop, we don't go this route. We have the funding here and we go that route. So we're looking at two different federal, or two different sources of funding for this project right here. So again, there's a small presentation. A lot of it, I think, is, uh, they'll touch on everything, so many things in common. The only real big difference I wanna tell you is that it's not a PFAS issue, which means that's, that's why we split it up into two different projects. We split it up that way because we wanted to make sure, you know, we get that money for that PFAS. We're confident, we have a high level of confidence in that we're gonna get that. If we don't, we'll have to address that in a different way, but we wanted to keep that project separate. Again, you starting out? So Laura will give you an overview. It's, I think it's a little bit more condensed version, uh, but it is a requirement, as again, as I said before, that through a state revolving fund to, uh, for this process.
Thank you, Dave. Please, continue.
So as Dave mentioned, for the Sashaba Road, maybe Road Corridor, we do have some water quality concerns. There were two leaking underground storage tanks that had confirmed releases within that project area since the nineteen nineties. Oakland County Health has been conducting groundwater sampling since, since that time. MTBE, it's a very long name that I can't even pronounce, but it's a gasoline additive that is still detected at trace amounts along Drayton Road. So again, we looked at alternatives explored. Um, one would be no action. Two would be up, looking at optimum performance of existing facilities, so similar to the, the previous project. Um, we feel that the, the system is running at optimum performance. Uh, we, you know, we would not be addressing the PFAS or VOC issues for residents and businesses by this option. Um, again, looking at the regional alternative to connect to the Great Lakes Water Authority, it would be very cost prohibitive. And again, it would take several years to provide the infrastructure to even, um, to look into that route. So we are proposing, uh, option four would be the extension of the existing infrastructure that would provide safe, high-quality drinking water through municipal connections, increasing reliability, redundancy, and water production. The estimated construction budget for that option four is eight point two million dollars. And I'll let Mike talk a little more specifics on the project area.
Thanks, Laura. Um, so I'll get into some of the project specifics. And one of the things to clarify what you're gonna see here in a second is, um, um, this project plan includes two specific project areas. Um, one of them, we're calling the, the Deerwood WSSN Water Main Connection. WSSN is your water system serial number. Uh, one of the previous slides in the last public hearing showed you had that Deerwood Water System, which is totally separate from your main system right now. It's not connected. So this, this Deerwood Project area is, is separate from the other area Dave was talking about that, that you're getting potential funding from Lisa McLean's office. So I just wanna make that clear. There's two separate project areas that are included in this project plan. Both are gonna address water quality, but one of the initiatives that Eagle has is combining, um, it's consolidation of water system, uh, so that there's a, a fewer number of serial numbered systems and, uh, they can track it better, um, better maintenance on the systems and all that. So I just wanna make that clarification. So you'll see these two separate project areas and I'll talk about them. Uh, this Deerwood, uh, Water Main Connection would include four thousand three hundred feet of water main to tie that Deerwood Loop into your main serial numbered system. Was again, again, a consolidation effort. Um, it'll reduce some of the reporting requirements on, uh, on the DPW. What's that?
Storage.
Oh, yeah, storage requirements. So there's a lot of reasons, uh, to do that, water quality reasons, um, as well. So, uh, areas impacted, um, this water main would go through Clintonwood Park and connect onto Perry Lake Road. Tying into the Deerwood System, no real impact to Deerwood Road, but, uh, certainly the tie-in at Clarkston Road would be, um, part of the plan. Uh, again, it's gonna provide redundant reliable drinking water to the Deerwood, uh, uh, system and, uh, it'll ease the township operations and maintenance, um, again, eliminating one of your serial numbered, uh, systems. Uh, this is just a map showing the project limits, uh, connection on Clarkston Road on the south, going through your Clintonwood Park and, uh, connecting, uh, to the west at Perry Lake Road. All right, so the second project area that we talked about, and this is the one where the environmental concerns, um, water quality concerns are, is the Maybe Road Water Main Extension, and that's the one that Lisa, Lisa McLean's office was potentially gonna participate in the, uh, project. Involves eighteen thousand feet of water main, um, in the Drayton subdivision area bordered by Maybe Road, Pelton Road, Waterford Road, Center Street, Williamson Street, Echols Street, Gaiet, Winell, Heath, Frankwell, Drayton, Pelton. These are all roads that would be getting water main that don't currently have it. Again, it'll provide residents, um, with the option for connecting to municipal water, which you guys have a high-quality, safe, reliable drinking water system that, that they would have the ability to connect to. Um, this is the project limit. Again, we've got, uh, just kinda the yellow lines, uh, showing the, uh, project areas bordered to the north by Maybe Road, on the west by Waterford Road. East, Drayton Road would be the farthest east point road in that, uh, system, and the south, southern border is Pelton Road. So these are, this is a cost breakdown, um, showing the costs associated with both the Maybe, Maybe Road, um, project and the Deerwood Loop. So we've got design costs, uh, construction costs, um, construction admin, inspection, some contingency monies. Again, we've got some allowances, um, and some, some bonding, uh, fees. For the overall project costs, we've, we've got eight point, uh, two million dollars. But the total costs, including grant funding, cause I don't, we didn't, we mentioned, there's a component that we've got designed covered through a separate Eagle grant. So the Maybe Road Design Engineering, we've got notice that that is actually covered by another grant opportunity. So we've done quite well recently on, uh, applying for these funding mechanisms. So taking that off of the total to show you seven point eight million dollars would be the total project cost considering, four hundred and forty thousand dollars, I think, is coming from a grant. So similar to the last public hearing, uh, just doing a cost comparison using the two point five percent interest rate. At that rate, annual principal and interest payments for the project would be five hundred thousand dollars. At this point, we're figuring that that would be funded by current operation and maintenance budget. Um, you're gonna pick up approximately two hundred new customers as part of this, so you'd obviously get some increased revenue from those. Uh, comparing the project cost to, uh, four percent, if you're able to get that on the open market, that results in an annual savings of about seventy-three thousand dollars. Kinda making this an intriguing option for financing. This is just a bar chart showing those savings over time with the, uh, with the, uh, annual savings. It totals, uh, one point four million dollars over time, over the twenty-year payback period. Uh, the project, the project plan requires us to look at the social environmental impact, um, as we discussed. Likely, if we can get project funding, um, new customers, likely no, no proposed rate increase. Traffic impacts, yeah, there's gonna be construction. There'd be impacts to the areas that we mentioned, um, residential areas. At the outskirts, not much, just some tie-ins, occasional traffic. We do, uh, as part of the Deerwood Project, we do cross the Clinton River. That'd probably be the most, uh, difficult part of construction. The environmental impact came back to say that we're not likely to impact the Northern Long Earbat, but we may impact the Eastern Musisaga Rattlesnake. Alls that means is we have to put certain restrictions and requirements into our contract documents that protect any of the endangered species, and we'd be happy to do that anyways. Looking at the project schedule, um, February twenty twenty-five, we'd have a submittal of draft plans and specifications. By April, we'd be, we'd be submitting the environmental assessment, permit applications, plans and specifications. Um, by May, looking to get approval of the project plan by Eagle, approval of our final plans and specifications, and getting ready for, uh, bidding the project out. Potentially starting construction as early as September twenty twenty-five, pending material and contractor availability. So November twenty-sixth on this one is a more realistic timeframe for completion. Be happy to answer any questions anybody has?
Any questions from board members? Claire Newick.
Mike, what are you looking at with impact on easements for this project? Seems like it would be more than the other. You said you only had a couple on the other.
We've got...
It just seems...
So for the most part, I think you're gonna have, you're gonna have some easement, um, challenges with the Deerwood Loop. I think coming through the park is not a problem. I think we know people that could help us with that. But, um, but, uh, connecting, uh, to Perry Lake Road, I think we'd have some challenges, um, we'd have to work through. As far as most of the rest of the area, it's pretty wide public right of way. I don't anticipate a ton, but certainly we'd have to get into that in a little more detail as we move forward.
Thank you.
She has to stay Morocco.
More concerned about the Clintonwood tie-in to Perry Lake going through the headwaters. Is, can that be done with direct boring through that sensitive area?
Yeah, it's a good question. That would be the intent. We'd try to, we'd try to do a long bore across that area. So, um, putting tight specs together and getting the right contractors is gonna be key there. Cause you want somebody capable of, of doing a long enough bore that you're not gonna have a problem with it. But that, that, that would be the intent to bore across there.
Cause looking at the parcel we just picked up, the twenty-eight acres to the east, um, or west, I'm sorry, you kinda gotta get way north into the headwaters before you bang a left over to Perry Lake Road the way the properties are configured. Are we looking at trying to stay on the township property line? Or if we ran the southern route through the headwaters of that acreage, we'd end up in one other person's parcel and then we could head north up to Perry Lake Road opposed to doing the big L through the headwaters, maybe staying south of the headwaters and going west and then heading north up to Perry Lake Road? Is there a preferable method and do you think there's any limitations to the direct boring that would just, so that we could keep our footprint out of, uh, that property that we just bought for protection? You know, it's certainly gonna be a concern.
Yeah, it, it's a good question. It's something to look at. One of the ideas, um, of coming through the Clintonwood Park was to also serve the facilities in that park. So coming as far north as we could on there kinda serves, solves that problem. But we could look at alternative locations or routes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? Just to make a comment for you guys, um, before, um, yeah, for the last few months, my office has contacted Congress, US Congresswoman Lisa McLean, and we started working with her staff. I actually flew to Washington DC, I met with the staff, started working on it. And then Dave McKey, the office as well, has been helping and provide the right application, which make a... make us be in the top priority of Congresswoman Lisa McLean, and that's going to help us a lot. So we already passed the first stage, which is we are selected. These $5 million is going to be a good sort of, you know, support for township. I think this is going to be great for infrastructure, I'm hoping for the best, but we train really hard and we follow up. And I think, you know, in the near few months, in the future, we're going to see the results, but I think it's, it's going to be a positive for us. But Dave McKee is trying to be proactive. I'm seeing other avenues as well, so either way, we're going to make this, this happen and it's going to be a good for our township. Okay, we have a lot of residents. Can you please state your name and address, please?
Yes, David Townsend, 544-510. Got a few questions. Hopefully, most of them can be quick yes or no, given that there are two very similar projects here. For the second one, is there any cost to the residents at this point based on the plan you just described? Or is it going to be covered with grants and everything you're working on?
Our goal right now, if we get the grant funding, right, that's to cover all the installation of water main hydrants, and every parcel will get a connection point to the property line. And if we get enough, you know, depending on if we can cover that, we plan on paying for the connection from that point into the home. Now, I can't tell you exactly, I can tell you what we've done with the board approval with the project. We're trying to mirror exactly what we did with this project that's going on right now. So the only cost that the residents paid for was $1,722.
And is that going to be, is connection going to be mandatory? Okay, so those of us who have private wells can remain on private wells for the time being.
Dave, can you be close to the microphones so people can?
Sorry, sure.
The questions are good, it's just so people can hear, you know?
Okay. What's the next question? Okay, good. I wanted to confirm that, I appreciate that. This looks an awful lot like, I don't want to say final approval, but this looks an awful lot like approval once the vote happens tonight. That, based on that timeline that I just saw, it looks an awful lot like everything else is just putting the pieces together. Am I misreading that?
Yeah, a little bit. So just so, this is the process. This is not committing the township to do this at all. With the state revolving fund, this loan that we're going to have to, there's, you have to get bond counsel and there's all these steps you have to do, public notification. We have to have meetings, we have to have, you know, you come and have residential people come and we talk about the project, show you what's going on. I have to establish pricing, you know, reduce pricing. I've come to the board and asked for reduced township fees to help, you know, incentivize people to connect and to make it more affordable for people to connect at any time. But this does not commit this township to this project at all. You know, this is just, we're just going through some steps. We can pull the plug anytime we want, so this is not a final.
What's the final, the final vote essentially? About when in the process is that?
So if we did, for this one here, our final would probably be somewhere.
So the township wouldn't be committed to spending any funds on the project until you go through the bidding process with a contractor? And you, once you, once you award that contract to the contractor, you're committing to that, that's when you go through the process with the state for the loan payback and go through all of that process. So it's, we're a long ways out from that, but yeah, you'd have to go through all the bidding process with the contractors and, and the township would have to authorize an intent resolution to award to the contractor, which finalizes your intent to the state so that they can trigger the financing components of the project.
And that would probably be, would we have bidding on this?
That's, oh, that was like April, April, May 25.
I feel like that was about the second to last point on that schedule, I think. Okay. And then, let's see here. Just, I know that there are a lot of things up in the air with funding. Here's my question. Is there a version of this where everything gets approved and the contracting, or contractors get started on the project, and then we wind up with any possibility of an assessment on the residents to pay any of it if something falls through?
No, we would never go down that road. We're not going to go forward unless we decide that we, you know all that before a shovel goes into the dirt.
Okay. That's, those are the big ones. Thank you so much.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anyone else online? Anyone on the board?
Yeah.
Trustee Jim.
Thank you. I think it's appropriate, and this is, this is directed really for the supervisor and the board. I've heard reference to Congresswoman McLean's name several times since joining the board, and I think it's, there, there are no shortage of grant opportunities, funding requests that we can make. We have that prerogative, we have that right, and we should. But I think it's, it's, it's very dangerous to either ourselves or to direct staff to reference those funds and to reference her, because frankly, because of the very delicate process and no worse than at the federal level to kind of count our chickens before they hatch. And it's also, it also puts our Congresswoman in a difficult position because while there are grant opportunities, and I have no doubt she's going to go bat, to bat for those she represents, until we have a check in hand, I don't think we should be referencing that. I think it's, it's appropriate to say there are grant funding opportunities that we are pursuing, but I don't think it's appropriate in consideration of her and all that she does for her constituents and in consideration of the residents, you know, here in the room that are watching, that we need to have a really clear picture of what we're talking about. I just wanted to bring that up.
Thank you, Jim. I recall Dave says that we got a letter from Lisa McLean saying that we got selected and we are in the top 15 project that she select for the next step. So we got selected or project that he submitted, DPW submitted, got selected. There's all the letter says, among a lot of other communities, they also applied for it, we got selected. So we went to the next level and we are waiting for the final approval. That's all we are. That's all he says. We didn't say we getting that money for sure. That's why he's presented two different plans.
Yeah, I'm just saying, this isn't the first, I, I hear that reference a lot, and what I'm just saying is I, I think we should pump the brakes.
Yeah, I know.
On speaking to those funds until we have a check in hand.
Yeah, I think he just came today.
No, I'm not, I'm just saying in, in general, not necessarily directed at tonight and.
Yeah, he just came today.
Yeah.
Yeah, we even talked before. Clark, Newick?
Dave, can we put the, these slides on the website so then I think the residents can review back? It'd be easier to, I think, click and look at these for sake of timeline and thing like that. Thank you.
So I just, just to make some clarification, you're right, Jim, you know, that's why we're chasing down two sources of funding here. We get the funding through the federal government, through discretionary grant, or we're going to go get the loan. So it, you know, but we're, we're an open book here, you know, we just want to make sure everybody knows, you know, we're going after different sources of funding instead of just going down this road or hanging our hat on this other side. We're not doing that. We're going after both, you know, because this is a project, in our opinion, needs to be done. Ultimately, the board will decide. But we just want to make sure that everybody understands that, you know, we're going for different sourcing, sources of funds.
Yeah, thank you, Dave. Basically, we have, we are working on it. We work and put an effort to work and get some funding.
I apologize if we use that as like, oh, business money, we applied for, I think I've mentioned it, you know, you guys go through the congressional and congressional process on itself, right? You know?
Yeah.
So we get that check in the mail, as they say.
Yeah, yeah, no, yeah, no qualms, no qualms of saying we're pursuing funding, but again, in deference to the process, I think it's detrimental to ourselves, to the hard work Congresswoman McLean engages on in our behalf, to be talking in a way, and I'm not specifically speaking to you, I've just heard reference to Congresswoman McLean's name on several things, whether it's residential roads, now it's this. There's a finite amount of dollars, as we all know, right?
Absolutely.
And so there's a very treacherous process that has to be navigated through, and I think it's detrimental to our, to our own interests and to her interests to be speaking so freely about this when we don't even know if, other than being nominated for consideration, we haven't gone any further. And now, again, those are, it's really more directed supervisor Aliaga and the board, not necessarily toward you. Just a general comment, just thought it was important to, to bring delight, that's all.
Sure. Trustee Morocco.
I just want to make a few comments as a local builder in town that, you know, wells are getting to be up there between 8,000 and 12,000 a house, so I think it's really important that we pursue a steady pace of providing that service to residents. I know some people that's, well, wells went out, you know, and it bankrupted them.
You're right, Sam, I mean.
And they're stuck with no water. So, you know, it's not just, I lost money, I can't even live in my house anymore. So I think that the way that you've been doing it, the way that we've been presenting it, the way that we're, it's being paid for the rates of the people that tie into it in a very slow manner with a low-income loan, I mean, I think that it's something that you have to pursue because a lot of these wells were put in 20, 30, 40 years ago, they're shallow, they're old steel pipe wells, and that's a repair that people just can't absorb, you know? And it's not something that you rent, you know, that you can wait for. You're out of water. You can't have, you know, you have nothing, you have an inhabitable house immediately the second that it goes out, you can't live there anymore. So, you know, so there's a, I think there's a need and I think there's a responsibility of the township to provide that. If we can continue to give low rates and we can keep it down under $2,000 on a tap fee, that, that makes that much more obtainable for people to be able to dig themselves out of that situation if it happens. And I know from, you know, living on, having my own well, that it, you know, you wake up one morning and the water don't work. And that's, that's a very, you know, that can be a very scary thing for people.
DeShaw Brown?
I'll just share, I suppose anecdotal information. The number of residents coming to pay their water and sewer bills and how often I hear that the water is so expensive. And, and so I, I look at the bill with them and kind of show them, and for those folks that aren't on the system that you just wouldn't know this, we, we charge $2.50 for 700 gallons, is that?
748.
748 gallons is $2.50. It's quite a bit less than what you pay for a gallon at the store. They come in with, I don't know what the average water bill is, so don't quote me, but I don't know, 160, the utility bill, let me correct, the utility bill, an average of about maybe 160 a quarter. Well, 114, 50 of that is for the sewer. So really, probably on average, assuming you're not using township water to sprinkle your lawn, you're paying $40 a quarter, so you're going to be 18 bucks a month for water. So even if you got to get on the water system, the water itself, our rates are really great comparative to others, so.
Yeah, I appreciate it. And just a couple of things to throw in, you know, these projects, you don't have to get rid of your private well if you connect. There's no mandated regulation, the state says you got to get rid of your private well. We have residents that are, okay, they're repurposing it, water their garden, put a plum, it's a, wash your car. Just don't drink it. You know, I mean, that's, you know, there has to be a physical connection for, of the potable water that you drink, bathing in your house, but you can have outside spigots to wash your car or, or water your garden and use your well. We just want to make sure that you have safe drinking water.
Chappelle, 8580, Elkhorn Drive. Two things. One is, as far as Lisa McLean's thing goes, how many people are on the list that made it to the next level? Fifteen?
Fifteen projects, she selected 15.
And what is the total of funds available versus how much are the other 14 asking for? So we don't know where we rank?
I have no idea.
Okay. I'm going to switch gears on you a second. So I live in the Manners, and we have that community well, and one of the things that, and this is just me being me as a resident, a ton of rust gets pushed through there. Ton of rust. Everything that I have turns gold, brown, okay? So, okay, it does, and you flush it out.
We're going to look into it tomorrow. I promise you that.
Well, so people come out there like two times a week. I thought it was going to be one of my other questions later on, but I mean, so that is not supposed to be happening, right? There should be some sort of filtration on there to keep that rust out of there?
Yes, we filter the rust out. If you're getting it, there's an issue, there's a reason why.
Is that like?
We haven't had any complaints, that's why.
Do you blow from the house back out?
No.
You only blow just the main lines, right? And then all that rust could go down the lines to the house, right?
Yeah, we, we don't do much with your private line from the water main into your house.
Right.
But, you know, because we produce the water, we push it up in the water mains. So if you have issues, you know, could be some other, could be, could be you.
I'm just saying.
But we will help.
Okay.
We're a little, we'll look into it. I appreciate it.
Dave, I have a quick question. Previously, in previous year, do you apply for anything to Lisa's lock-in, the previous Congresswoman for that district?
We have, we did apply in the past, you know, I did apply in the past for same kind of funding through the federal government and our local representative for that.
And then we make it to the?
I did it two years, we were not, we were not funded. Our projects weren't selected.
Okay. And we were selected before?
Email we got today said we were selected, there's 15 projects, great question. I don't know how, I, I'm assuming, and they get 50 million each, and then they can decide who gets what, because I've seen projects that were funded previously, $6 million for a new fire station, $3 million for a wastewater treatment plant upgrade. I don't know. It depends on how much people apply for.
Dave, when you submit before to Lisa's lock-in, that we get selected to this point before?
No.
No? Okay, so this is the first time we get selected afterward? Okay, that's all of them. All right, thank you, Dave. Any other questions? No, you? Anyone online? Okay, I guess we close that.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Thank you for the hard work.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, we close at 7:40. Okay, moving on, presentations and report, we are ready. Kim, you're next, please, presentation on, or assessing director, Kim Finley is next.
Good evening, township board. Assessing does not get to come before you very often, but at the conclusion of March Board and about the time the state confirms our role, I like to come in and give you an update. So where we are today, here's our cover page with a few of the properties we deal with, a lot of appraisals around Deer Lake. We have golf course appraisals, Monarch Grove, Pine Knob, some industrial on White Lake. That's Cambridge Circle, Walden Village, Alex's. So we deal with an array of all different types of things in the appraisal world. I should highlight this section as well. An assessor is constitutionally required to set the assessed value of 50% of the usual selling price or true cash value of the property. Somewhere back in the 1700s, 1800s, we got labeled as tax assessors. I don't think that's really fair, we're appraisers, but that's a, that's a label that has stuck. How is the township comprised? What are we comprised of? We have 85% residential properties, 3% personal property, which as you know, many of those are being phased out, personal property assessments except for utilities, and, oh, the other one leaves my mind at the moment. 12% commercial and 1% industrial within Independence Township. You can see the parcel counts here for improved vacant by class, how many we have that are exempt. The exempt parcels or parcels with no value on the rule are made up by school-owned, government dedicated open space to a residential development, churches, the land conservancy, and parkland. Assessing overview, real quickly, what we do is take all of this information, we don't make the market, we track the market through statistical analysis, which comes to us via recorded sales, property transfer affidavits. The next largest component is building permits, code enforcement, and planning projections. So we know what's coming, where it's going, what's in. So we know what's coming, where it's going, what's influencing the values. Economic reports and projections, annual 20% parcel review, and I'll touch more on that in a minute. And we enforce and police the exemption applications and land division applications. Land division splits are acted on by the assessor, the building official, and our planner. So all of this information goes into the assessment roll. We finish the roll, turn it over to the Board of Review for valuation appeals. County equalization then gets it, state equalization occurs. We handle defense appeals at the Michigan Tax Tribunal with anyone who is not in agreement with what the Board of Review did, or a commercial industrial property may go straight to the tax tribunal. Unfortunately, unfortunately, at the same time, we've had a couple Court of Appeals cases recently. I'll touch on those in another slide real quick. And lastly, the state of Michigan audits our department. So they get a complete upload of our database, they can go through and police, are we uncapping correctly, are we picking up new construction, are our exemptions appropriate, are they up to date? Then our assessment roll gets imported into the treasurer's office where they multiply all of those individual assessments by the millage rates, and we come out with revenue and tax dollars for these authorities. So it's not just township money that we're assessing for, it's public schools, town hall, parks and rec, fire, police, safety paths, library, county operations here in Clinton Metro Parks, community college, intermediate schools. We have the Detroit Institute of Art, the zoo, transit millage, and county parks are up there as well. So when we're setting values and turning those values over to Paul to generate a tax bill, all of that money is dispersed to all these authorities. What did we do last year? And this is a five-year picture, if I can increase the size on this. That little bar doesn't want to let me move here. Try your arrow, Kim, on the keyboard. Try the arrow on the keyboard, maybe. I don't know where the keyboard is, don't know. All right, so in 2020, our total state equalized value was 2.2 billion. Consumer Price Index, our inflation rate was 1.9%. I won't cite all of these numbers out loud, but you can see the brunt of this huge inflation increase in the real estate market hit us on our 24-roll. And that's because our mandates from the state keep us on a 24-month sales study that ends in March. So we're always about two years behind tracking the real estate market. So we went up 14.84% for '24 over '23. The other major component to this is the CPI, the inflation rate for Michigan. We have been capped at 5% the last two years, the maximum allowed under Proposal A. For 2025, we're currently on track for a 3% increase, so it's starting to turn and come back down. The increase in taxable value is due to uncappings, new construction, and that CPI, that CPI rate being applied. So that 7.68% is comprised of those three components. We have a corridor improvement authority, and I've just included these to show you the growth in the value in the CIA. There is an important note to make here that working with Rick Yeager, our finance director, and looking at the original CIA plan, the county's contribution will probably be maxed out this year. We can continue to go on through 2028, 2029, and keep capturing our own township revenues, our millage rates, to pay off any remaining debt. If anyone had a crystal ball back then, or if it's legal, it would have been nice to take their cap and be able to apply some inflation to it, because this goes back to the early 2000s when this started. But their contribution was set in stone in that original agreement, and that's what These are the market value increases based on the two-year sales study, so 11 and 1/2% for '24, commercial industrial, we're right around 5%. Poverty exemptions and what that means in terms of revenue are noted below. We always average around 20, 25 poverty exemption applications per year. There is a line item here that shows, we will use '23 because all the applications are not yet in for '24. In '23, it was $9,700 lost in township revenue and $40,000 overall. But it's a very worthwhile exemption. We get to meet these people and help them fill out paperwork one-on-one. Veterans exemptions, there is talk of this being taken over by the state, but as we've previously discussed and with our lobbyists that are working for the township, the state hasn't figured out how to fund these exemptions themselves. But you can see we've gone from 62 disabled veterans exemptions in 2020 to 92 and climbing in 2024. So our total revenue loss from those exemptions now is 400, almost $426,000. And to the township, their portion is 102,000 plus. Now, these are the valuation appeals that went before the March Board. So out of 14,500-plus parcels, this is how many appeared before the March Board on value. So we had 25 this year. Our total Michigan tax tribunal appeals, and this is commercial, industrial, residential, all combined, by year. And I have some notes summarizing that. 32 have gone to the tribunal for assessments affirmed, one valuation increase, 11 stipulated settlements, 10 withdrawals or dismissals. And we had Court of Appeals, value affirmed on one case. On a second case, they ruled that the tribunal erred in their final opinion and judgment and remanded it back to the MTT. We're still waiting on a final determination. Why do we do reappraisals and 20% parcel review annually? I have a phenomenal staff I'm extremely proud of, and they go out and they tackle this with gusto. The state tells us, look at 20% of your roll a year, review it. And from doing so, this is the money that was picked up just in '23. So 3.8 million in taxable. So township revenue, that's at 7.76 mils, that's an extra $29,400. And for everyone, it was an extra $122,356. In a five-year window, this compounds, because this money was omitted from the roll, it goes on, it's new, and it stays there, and it gets the rate of inflation every year thereafter. So looking at a five-year window, that means $135,000 more for the township, just from their 23 projects. And for overall authorities, 560,915 in five years. So to sum that up, this is one year's worth of reappraisal work. Imagine the compounding results of five or 10 years' worth of projects, because every year we're looking at these 20%. And most of this, hats off to the building and planning department, because they are working hand-in-hand with my appraisal staff on construction being done without permits. And sadly, I had to go out on one just the other day where some people, new baby, new house, and they finished the basement without permits, and we had to go in and add it because someone else reported it. It's not a pleasant situation to be in, but we have to do it to be fair. There's been a lot of talk about open space in the township, so I thought I would just throw this in. Our township consists of 26,216 acres. How many are vacant? Over five acres, parcels over five acres, we have 175 parcels. After you deduct the tax exempt land, we have 1,561 acres. Less than five acres, we have 735 parcels. A lot of these might be 1/10th of an acre, road right-of-way, individual lot in Thandera that's never been combined with anything else. That makes up most of this under five acres, and if you take out the tax exempt parcels, There's a list of our largest landholders over five acres. I won't drill down into that. Here are a few market tidbits I just thought might be interesting for you, the number of sales over the last few years. Our average home value for '24 is 406,600. Our highest recorded residential sale came through at the tail end of last year at 2.2 million. Now, a little bit of history, and I'm dating myself, but I remember when the Clark homes sold for 200,000. It was the first home in Independence, Clarkston, to break $200,000. And a few years ago, we had our first million-dollar sale, not too long ago. And even though this is the only recorded sale this high, if I were to go out and do individual site appraisals on some homes, we're looking at $5 million in the not-too-distant future coming through. And then some of our developments that you hear about a lot, Oakhurst, these are our sale price ranges, 420 to 2.2. Eagle Ridge at Morgan Lake, 400 to 675 so far. Walters Lake, we had a large sale there. Lake Oakland, we had two sales, 300,000, 425,000, and they had demolition costs on top of that. Walden Village across the street, 360 to 685, 855 so far, and that will keep climbing. Lakefront Sale, highest one, 2.13 million so far. But I have appraisals in the office at close to 3 million for litigation purposes. Pine Vista, 400 to 540. Highest commercial sale the last five years, 13 million, that's the Kroger Plaza at Maybe and Dixie. And Independence Point Medical Center, where the Fifth Tavern is, 9.1 million. Clarkston Gardens, as a reference point, we're now at 215 to 355. And Drayton Road, 225 to 259. And I've included a list of our top 30 taxpayers by taxable value. We have apartments, utility companies. There's some varied ownership in there as well. Assisted livings for sure. And this, everything that we do, and I work closely with Rick on this worksheet, and this worksheet actually gives me high blood pressure, but, especially when I get an email that says, will you take a look at this formula one more time? So what happens here is all of the assessments and the millage rates go on this revenue projection worksheet. And I don't know how to get it big enough for you to read it and me to explain it at the same time. But our taxable value is here, percent of increase, CIA assessed and taxable, which gets deducted, they get to capture 50% of our revenue to repay debt. The DDA is now on here, and revenue projections for DDA. And then to the far right, we have our own millages, general fund, fire, police, safety path, expired road millages on there for reference, and total revenue for the township via property taxes. So that's what we do. You can sit back off the edge of your chair now, relax. Any questions?
Any questions from board members? Trustee Ritchie.
What's the, you know, in the Assistant Department, there's different levels of certification for your workers, as well as yourself and everything. What is, isn't there like a requirement when the township gets to a certain total value to have a certain level of assessors?
I have the level for the Michigan Master Assessing Level, the highest one. We have a deputy that has it that is gaining experience all the time, but he's a relatively new core. We have a 3 and a 2. And I anticipate with the completion of Meyer Fresh and the three other commercial pads along Walden Road, and possibly a couple of projects along Sashaba, we're going to be pushed into the level four. We're hovering just a hair below it right now, the requirement.
What's that value level?
I didn't bring that with me.
Just a proxy. It doesn't have to be exact.
It's in the 3 billion-plus range.
Okay. So we're, we're under 3 billion right now, so we're, we're getting close to having a...
Yeah, we're not very far.
So we should be set, because we have people on staff to, to cover that legal requirement, right?
Yes, and that, it's, that's quite an accomplishment for the township, because we only have about 400 commercial parcels. So most of this value is coming from residential. We don't have a lot of big office buildings, but the assisted livings have definitely given a boost to the roll.
That's a way into a question I was going to ask, is, are we a higher concentration of residential compared to maybe some of our peers as a percentage? I don't know if you even know the answer to that, but, you know, looking at an Orion or a Brandon Township or Waterford, which is a lot larger and probably a lot more commercial.
Yes, Waterford has very nominal new residential construction, but they have, I don't know, I'm going to guess and say, five times the commercial parcels we do. They don't have the new and additions to enhance their tax base that we do. And eventually, there's lessons to be learned there, because when this new construction slows, you're going to be relying on your fund balance and higher millage rates. So the more responsible we are now, and the more, I hate to say, the more accurate we are, the more money you have in the bank for the future. Springfield Township obviously has less, well, they have probably as much or more residential, but a lot less commercial. Orion and Oxford let the big box stores in and blew our doors off on some of that, so.
Okay. Any other questions? Anyone for the audience? Anyone online?
How's that?
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you for the opportunity. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Close at 8:04. We have another presentation. Paul, our treasurer, Paul Brown.
It's nice to see there's a monitor here now, since my last presentation, it's easier to do this when you can look at it on the screen. to do this when you can look at it on the screen. So, this is the first quarter's investment report. For those not familiar with this, it's required under Michigan law that the board is presented with a quarterly report on how the township's money is being invested. And this has changed quite a bit over the years. We are going on, I think this will be the sixth presentation where we've continued to tweak the investment policy to require more transparency and more visibility for the board and the public to see how our investments are being held. For quite a while, we simply were showing just these charts and then some conversations about it, and I think the end of 20, beginning of 2023, we started including a detailed list of all of the township's holdings. And I think there's a lot of value in this. And in fact, Jim, one of the things you're going to notice here is that, and there's value in going before what I have, which is an investment advisory committee. It's township presidents who I meet with ahead of time, review all this information with them, get input from them, and support behind my strategy, although statutorily, the treasurer has a right to invest as long as he's doing it within the regulations of the law. So, Jim, one of the things you might notice on here, if you look at the top of this, is there's a big negative up here that you wouldn't have seen at the meeting. And another value of having the investment advisory committee is a chance for somebody to point out some typos. In this particular case, the typo was that I actually removed this negative from the data because it was skewing my averages, when I look at my average weighted maturity and my average interest rate. However, I should have unhitted to show this list. And so, what's interesting here is to understand what this negative is. And so, it's a great opportunity to actually walk you through the process of a transaction and a couple of them, and what this number means. And again, from a transparency standpoint, it's unusual to see a negative. This basically says there's negative cash. So, you know, why is there negative cash? So we're going to walk you through that, and it will include walking you through an actual, the actual investment process. So we'll try and get this so I can see all of it here. That's probably good enough there. You'll see a couple of asterisks over here. There's one next to the negative 1,458.51. Each of these accounts at the top, they are cash and money market accounts with the investment brokers that we utilize. So, an investment matures, and they put the money there. We have a standing order that money, once it matures, comes back into our dedicated bank account at Chase for reinvestment from there versus reinvestment from there. And it lets the finance department then always track the complete life cycle of the investment back to when it's matured and put back into the bank, and then we will reinvest from there. So, what I'm going to do is I'm going to open up the ticket that's related to this. This is also tied to this one down here and this one down here, two investments. And so, I'll walk you through the process. And so, my process starts when I look at, I look at the maturity dates on the holdings, and I try to identify where I need to fill some holes. This is called laddering. So I always want to make sure the money is available for our expenditures as they come up. And so, I look to fill the gaps in here to make sure I've always got amounts popping up in timing with our accounts payable, payroll, other items that come up that we have to pay. So in this particular case, what I do is I'll send out an email, and I actually have the email here. So this email is to JP Morgan Securities, and I basically have already identified three treasuries that looked like they would be maturing at the right point in time and for the right dollar amounts. I sent this identical email to two other brokers, so I'm getting three quotes on it. And I sent them all the same thing, I'd like quotes on these three, and they respond pretty quickly, usually within four or five minutes. In this case, they responded with their quotes on each of the ones I requested. And from a reading standpoint, what I'm looking at are the discount rates, which means there's face values on these, these, two of them, I think, two of these were at a million dollars apiece, and one was at half a million. The discount means I'm paying less than that for them, and that's part of our return on investment once it matures, and that's what generates the yield or the interest rate here on the end. Chase, JP Morgan Securities was lowest on two of these bids. Somebody else was low on the other one. I bought the other one from somebody else. And in the bidding process, with this total, I think, 2.5 million, I think bidding it out saved us around $5,000 in price. So, again, it's always good to have multiple options with this. So now I can scroll up. I let them know that we're going to go ahead and do two of those. We, within 15, 20 minutes, we received trade tickets. So this is a trade ticket. This one is for 979,914.46. What's interesting in this situation is the settlement date. The settlement date's supposed to be April 1st. Settlement date on this other one is also April 1st. Typically, that means it settles on April 1st, which means it shouldn't have been on this third quarter investment report. So I was sort of surprised, and when I backed into this and looked, I go and look, and those two investments are in the list. So we actually got the investments in our account on the last day of March, but the bank didn't take the money out of the account till April. So what they did for their books, they show the negative 1,458 as a negative cash. So it all makes sense. The cash itself was sitting in the treasury bank account that we keep all the money in as we pull it out to make the investments at Chase. So that's what caused this negative. I thought it would be interesting to walk through the process of me acquiring something like this from beginning to end. And I also think it shows why it's so important that the board always maintains the ability to really see every single investment we hold. It's the easiest way to know that the money's being properly invested and allow people to ask questions when they don't understand it. So that's that part. I go back to the charts. You're not going to see a lot of change here. I always put a little narrative in here. The Federal Reserve's continued to indicate rate lowering outlook for 2024. So they keep talking about lowering rates. They haven't decided when they're doing it. The impact of that is interesting. So our, and I'm going to go back here to September of 2022. Our unrealized losses at that point in time were 1.3 million roughly. We had a steady decline in that, down to 550,000 or so at the end of 2023. This has ticked back up now to 653 as of March 31st. This is completely driven by the hesitancy of the Federal Reserve to lower interest rates. And the holdings we have that are generating these unrealized losses, and for those that don't understand it, they're unrealized losses because if we don't sell these, we will get all that money back at maturity. And so that's why the laddering is important, so that we don't put ourselves at risk of having to sell it for some reason and then recognize losses. If I go to our list, what you'll see here, all these here are showing these losses, and these were, these were purchased, for the most part, when interest rates were lower, and they stretch out a little bit. And so, the interest rates are lower than what we can get right now. You can see them as low as .59, .8. Right now, I'm getting 5%. And so, the market doesn't want to buy these, which is why they're showing losses on them. I looked today, that, the number today is that loss, let's see. The unrealized loss today is close to 600,000. So there's about a $50,000 swing that's happened just in the, in the past 45 days. I think it's driven by the jobs report that came out that wasn't great, because then that gets the market to think they're going to go ahead and lower rates soon. So, that part. I'm not concerned about this unrecognized loss. We're in really good shape. I probably have $9 million liquid of, that I could get for use within 24 hours, 48 hours, and it's earning 5%. So, we are doing well with that. I continue to try to take advantage of putting some monies out three, four, five years down the road to take advantage while the rates are high right now, because we know they're not going to last forever. I'm just being very cautious about that. Again, back to this narrative, our average weighted maturity has ticked up again. Further increases are going to be tempered by the low-yield holdings that we have, and those are those ones I pointed out that are less than 1%. Those are two and three years out. Until those mature, we're still going to be faced with this unrealized losses, but again, they're going to continue to drop down until they hit zero at maturity. Questions from anyone?
Questions from board members to Treasure Brown. Trustee Ritchie.
Sure.
Yeah, I guess, Paul, thank you for putting the second column on the page of your investments for, shows which part of the Public Act 20 that you can invest money in. And I guess for the public's benefit, you know, maybe they don't think your 5% is all that great, but you are restricted to what you can invest in by the government.
So Ron's referring to this column here, and this information here is taken right from Public Act 20. This was put in place decades ago to prevent guys like me from messing up. We're hoping to prevent that, because if people get involved in equities or things with variable interest rates, you can really get in trouble, and this is public money, and we don't want that. The number one most important thing is to protect the principal, and I think we do a pretty good job with that.
Thank you, Paul. Anyone else?
No.
Anyone for public? No? Okay. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Moving on, we don't have any postponed agenda items, so consent agenda. Request to approve the board of trustees regular close session meeting minutes of April 16, 2024. Second, request to approve the April 30, 2024 check run, including the ACH 1,87,714.87 cents, and ratify the April 12, 2024 payroll 337,448.03 cents. Any other motion?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, regular business. Dave McKee? Or DPW Director?
By the way, I take requests on the weekends if you need me to show up for anything. But this first item is for the approval of the resolution, so, just a little while ago, we had two public hearings about each project. So part of that, part of the state requirements is to approve a resolution. So the first one is for the DWRS of PFAS mitigation. And essentially, this resolution, what this does is confirms to the state that the township recognizes the need to make the improvements, acknowledges the project plan was presented at a public hearing tonight, and adopts the final project plan, and agrees to alternate for said plan, and designates and authorized project representative for all activities associated with the project, which it would be me. Would it does not commit the township to any financial obligations at this time. It does not. So, if there's any questions about the resolution, it is in your packet there. Those are the key points. Let me check with, did I miss anything is the reason why we're doing the resolution? Getting the nod, I think we covered that. So that is what the first two agenda items are, two different projects. The first one is before you for approval for the resolution. The clerk will sign that, and then we will send that to Lansing with a copy of the approved minutes of tonight's meeting, early next week sometime, or when. Carrie, the clerk's been awesome getting this stuff, you know, right quick for us, and then we'll get it to Lansing, and we'll complete this stuff.
Any questions from board members? Anyone would like to, no, I would like to make a motion?
If there's no comments from the residents, I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay.
I'll move to approve the final project plan FY 2025, drinking water state revolving fund distribution system improvements, PFAS mitigation, adopt resolution number 2024-011 as presented, and authorize the clerk to sign the resolution on behalf of the township.
Support.
Clerk Newbeck, yes. Treasure Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Morocco?
Yes.
Trustee Alamothu?
Yes.
Trustee Ritchie?
Yes.
Trustee Tetter?
Yes.
And Supervisor Aliaga?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Dave?
Second resolution is for the second project that was presented to you tonight. Same process. Again, so this is on record, this recognizes the need to make the improvements, acknowledges project plan was presented tonight, and adopts the final project plan, and agrees to alternative four, and it does designate and authorize project representative for all activities associated with this project. That would be the public works director and currently held by me. So if there's any questions on that, and again, this one does not commit this township to any financial obligation whatsoever.
Okay. Any questions from board members? Anyone from the public? Because we're ready to talk about this, so.
I'm prepared to make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I'll move to approve the final project plan FY 2025, drinking water state revolving fund project distribution system improvements, Maybee Road Water Main Extension, adopt resolution number 2024-012 as presented, and authorize the clerk to sign the resolution on behalf of the township.
Support.
Okay. Is there a call?
Treasure Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Morocco?
Yes.
Trustee Alamothu?
Yes.
Trustee Ritchie?
Yes.
Trustee Tetter?
Yes.
Supervisor Aliaga?
Yes.
And Clerk Newbeck, yes. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Dave?
So, which one are we on? I left my agenda.
Number three.
Number three, yeah.
I need more.
Village.
The city.
The village, okay. I left my agenda out there, sorry. Okay. City of the Village of Clarkson Sanitary Sewer, CCTV. Okay. So, just a little information, a little, let's go back a little bit. Independence Township has had a contract with the City of the Village of Clarkson to maintain their sewer system going back to 1970. There's been a couple amendments to that, and, you know, tweaks here and there, but we still have that contract in place as of today. We maintain the sewer system for the City of the Village. We do all the billing, and we are also responsible to do all the maintenance and respond to emergencies and things of that nature, and take care of it if anything happens on the sewer side. One of the things that we are required to do with our contract that we have is CCTV inspection, full circuit television inspection of the sewer mains. Now, some of the board members that have been here for a little while, not trying to age anybody, but if you recall, we did have a project called the Saw Grant. Saw Grant was established by Eagle and pretty much mandated, and I'm going to refer with, you know, my engineering firm, every, will, every public system in the state of Michigan will have an asset management plan for their sanitary sewer system. We have one. At that time, since they were their own entity, they didn't apply for it, or I don't know what happened, I wasn't here. I don't know why the village didn't pursue anything on their own. They didn't. But the point fact is that with our contract, and I think the reasoning why is in their contract, it says specifically in there that we will CCTV and inspect their sewers. So, over the years, I've asked Rick Yeager, our financial analyst, to see how much we've collected from the village for maintenance services. We bill them X amount of dollars every quarter per residential equivalent unit they have. And over the years, it's in your board packet, we have received just under, I think it was just under a million dollars, Rick? Approximately just under a million dollars. So we have collected the fees to do this function, and we are required by this integral agreement to do it once every 10 years. We're in year nine. Now's the time to do it. We have a cooperative purchasing agreement with Pipeline Management, who does our own CCTV inspection, so that they've been bid out, and I've come into the board tonight to get approval to have Pipeline Management, through us, do this task that we need to do for the City of the Village, to CCTV their sanitary sewer pipes, do a full assessment as required by the state, and then we will know what's going on down there. If they find issues where there's broken pipe, or there's gushers that are coming in, because as you know, we're billed by flow-based billing, we will address that with the village, with the City of the Village, and they will have to pay for repairs. Repairs are not part of our intergovernmental agreement, maintenance inspections, and responding to alarms and responding to customer complaints. That is. So I want to make that clear. If there's any, and they're going to find some repairs, trust me, there will be some repairs there. So tonight, when you need to get a budget amendment, because we did not budget for it this year, that's going to be on me. That's on me 100%. So we're here tonight to seek board approval to do this budget amendment, so we can get that going.
Okay. Any questions from board members?
Just for clarity, because this is new to me, Dave. So we've collected over the last, you know, nine years, $835,000 towards this. How does the other balance of that, if we're going to not to exceed 250? Is there, is there going to be a balance that the village is then going to need to cover?
No.
Or just, I didn't, I read the MAF, but I didn't understand exactly how that, we cover the 250 with, for they cover the 250.
So every year, we, myself and Rick, we go, we rebuild it for the contract. You know, we always evaluate how much we're going to charge, excuse me, per RU. Rick, and approximately, this village has like 590 RU. So we charge, I believe it's 40 right now, $40 per RU approximately every quarter for us to do maintenance down there. And we go down there a lot. We do inspections, we do a lot of mandated things that the Eagle wants us to do. And we're contractually obligated to do it. You know, I've been here standing at this podium many times, doing mandated things the state wants us to do. It's not funded, of course, but, so we bill them for that. So contractually, we are obligated to do these, the service for CCTV. I mean, it literally spells it out, and I can't remember which contract it was. I think it was the 1980 amendment or the, I should have highlighted that, I apologize. But we've collected the funds to do this, we're needed to do this. We've been paid to do this, haven't done it yet, but.
We've been paid enough to cover it?
I didn't budget for it. So this is a budget adjustment, because I did not budget for it.
Yeah, but we've collected the money over the past, since 2014. We've got money accumulated. You just didn't allocate it in this year's budget to cover it.
And it's time to do it.
I just wanted to verify that part.
Like I said, this is on me, I missed it when I'm budgeting for this year. And this will do the whole village.
Right.
So, you know, they're much smaller than the township. As you know, I come every year and we do sections, and it's an ongoing thing. But this is, this will do everything within the village.
Okay.
Thank you, Sam. Anyone else? Okay. Are you ready to make a motion?
I'll make one.
Oh, Terry?
Okay.
I'll move away the township's procurement, petty cash, and credit card policy, section three, standards for procurement 3.2, procurement procedures P-3, purchases and contracts from $10,001 and up, requiring comparative price quotations and accept quote received from Pipeline Management of Milford, Michigan, to provide CCTV sewer inspections for the city of the Village of Clarkston, Clarkston, as required in the intergovernmental agreement with the Charter Township of Independence and the city of the Village of Clarkston in an amount not to exceed $250,000, and approve budget amendment number 11 as presented.
Support.
Okay. Simple majority. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Sure. Next, Dave.
Don't go away, you're still up.
Yeah, yeah, I got a couple more, I think, right?
Asset disposal?
Thank you, thank you, Ron. I appreciate it. So next agenda item is request to disposal of assets cost greater than 5,000. Our asset management disposal policy, it's pretty clear. Anything that we've bought that costs us over five grand, we need board approval to get rid of it. So we did accumulate quite a few things. It's in your board packet. There's a lot of things there from a John Deere backhoe that's been sitting there since before I came here. 10 years, it's been sitting there. We have a couple dump trucks, and they're from various departments. So instead of each department coming up here wanting, we just took care of it ourselves. Got the blessing from the directors from the other departments. And through our policy, we need board approval to dispose of these items and go through the policy, asset disposal policy, and authorize the treasurer to dispose it according to that policy. So if there's any questions about any of the equipment that we have here, just to, like I said, we have a couple dump trucks, there's your old ones. We've replaced them already, replaced ours already. As far as there is, we're not going to replace the backhoe. The Kubota, we did replace, that was in the budget for this year. So our old Kubota that we had for the cemetery, it had, I affectionately call them Fred Flintstone brakes. There's no floorboards left, your feet go right through it, and the doors fall off when you open the door. But somebody could put some money into it, you know. That was replaced. The Ford boom truck will not be replaced. That was here before I got here, that, but somebody, you know, there's some value there. There's some value to some of these things, so. And we've, we've collected pretty good money over the past on some of these. Yes, sir.
The boom trucks, is that that yellow one?
No, this is a big white Ford. It's huge, it's like a crane truck.
I'm super excited to get these listed, especially these lawn mowers, because the time of year is fantastic. We'll probably get the most we ever get for this stuff.
Yeah, yeah, people gobble these up. We have people come from, I think we've had people from Tennessee come up, pie mowers. All over, it's crazy.
As it says, it's, the items are sold by the treasurer's office. This is something the board put in place back in 2013, I think. Doing this centrally made a lot of sense, and we got an eBay account. The board set in place a policy that we put these things out on eBay, and lo and behold, people bid on them, boy, and they come, people fly in. We sell some of the used trucks, people will fly in, we'll pick them up at the airport, and they, you know, you get eight, 10 grand for some of these trucks. The lawn, the zero turns, what we get, we got like 2,200 bucks for one we sold last fall.
We got $4,500, I remember, for an old pickup truck that was just garbage, but it had a big block V8 in it. The old 454, and it was just sat there for years and.
The board's intent in, in our policy is to make sure we get as wide an license as we can to get money back for taxpayer assets. So it's been working pretty good for a dozen years.
No.
Okay. Sam?
Certainly makes sense to liquidate this stuff than have it just sit there and rust out.
And it cleans up our yard.
I'm glad we're cleaning house and making some money off of it. And all this, is all of this going to the DPW general, like your?
No, so it'll go back, Rick, you know, when they're sold, they pay the township. Pretty sure that goes back into general fund.
Goes to the.
Unless it was, unless it was an enterprise fund purchase, then it will go into accounts receivable for them.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'll move to approve the disposal of the list of assets as presented with the cost basis of $5,000 or more, and authorize the treasurer to do so in accordance with the Charter Township of Independence Asset Management Policy.
Support.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Good. Thank you.
Still, Dave?
No, it's the last one, I think.
Employees.
Yeah, employees.
Yes. So my last item for myself is request approval to the 2024 part-time slash seasonal employee hiring and compensation. So a lot of you remember, a few years ago, we came back and we asked to raise that part-time rate to, I think it was 1750.
Yeah.
Am I mistaken? Because we were competing with McDonald's, fast food places, and we had a really hard time bringing on part-time seasonal help. When you're competing against, you know, mega billion dollar corporations, I don't care if it's McDonald's, Taco Bell, or Ace Hardware for that matter, it's tough. You know, our advertising budget's slow, but so, what talks? And it was hard to get people, the pool was small. So we did raise the part-time rate. Did it help? I think it helped somewhat. But having discussions with board members, other department directors, specifically Adam and the, Adam Klein, Parks Recreation Seniors Director, we talked about this. I've conferred with clerk, I've talked with Ron Ritchie about this. And we have heard from the public, too. Other people that are in committees that are in the public telling me that, you know, that what's going to attract people is, you know, there's people that want to work now. So I think maybe we're over this hump, there's people that want to get back in the field, but we got to be able to compensate them. Now, we don't want to move everybody up to 20 bucks an hour, because that's what we're going to be asked for is the, is the cap. $20 an hour is a maximum. It's up to the department directors to decide who gets that, if they get that at all. So we're again back to see if we could ask for increase in the wage to, for part-time seasonal helpers to no more than $20 per hour. Just to let you know that, in talking with Rick on this, this time of year, at this time, I don't believe there's any budget adjustments needed at this time. It all depends on what the turnout is. I know Parks and Recreation is, you know, they have to be in full swing of just bringing on gobs of people. So they have a lot, a lot of work to do, and a lot of programs, I know they don't. They don't want to be waiting, you know, we shouldn't have our residency programs waiting on us for services, so. I'm a little bit easier, I don't have as many I need to get as far as Public Works concerned, but we are staffed for cemetery, and we're three quarters of the way kind of there with Safety Path mowing, because we are behind on that a little bit. But hopefully, this will be some incentive to bring other people on, or at least look at us.
Thank you. Trusty Morocco?
Is, are these seasonal employees, I know you got, you got the cemeteries, the mowing crews, the Safety Path crews, I mean, all of these people, are you, is there any of the seasonal employees that oversee other seasonal employees that would be a little bit in the higher pay scale? Like what would drive them from the starting rate to the $20 an hour? You know, would there be some of that seasonal supervision, let's say, or higher, higher, you know? You know?
Oversight, essentially? Yeah, we do that. And that, that's, that's what we do over at DPW. I can't speak for Parks and Rec completely on that, but I'll give you an example. With this Safety Path mowing crew, you know, we have a couple young guys that come back every year. One guy's really knows all the sites. Kevin really, you know, he can trust him, and, you know, you might move him up. Come back next year, I'll give you a dollar or whatever, you know, give them a cent of eyes, and then he can, he trains the new people that come in, and then, because eventually they go, right? And Safety Path mowing, they're college, right? When they're, you know, it's time for them to go and make a mark in the world with their degree. So they're gone, and we kind of use that, the stepping process to foster, you know, leadership, and we compensate them for it. But, you know, if everybody's at the same or really low, we can't compete, they're, you know, they're going to go for the dollar, they're going to go for the money. So we try to keep them with us to come back every year. In the cemeteries at Lakeview, we usually have a, you know, senior person that's there. And although we have two new people this year, so we'll have to see how that goes. They won't be, they won't be bumped immediately to full pay. They have to essentially prove themselves, but we have to make sure that, you know, we definitely don't want to stifle anybody, but we do as much as we can.
Okay.
I guess, I guess that's the best way I can answer it.
Explained it.
Thank you.
I just think it's important to note that you've taken into account our current IWA union employees as well, and this does not infringe into.
Right.
What would be maybe our lowest union-paid position, so.
That's correct. We're not stepping out and telling us union-wise, we shouldn't have any issues. I've talked to the president of the union regarding the IAW union, or IWA, sorry. And he's like, you know, no problems. He says, you're not going to get any problems from us on that. Essentially, it helps them, you know.
Sure. Trusty Ritchie?
Yeah, I guess some of the things maybe you haven't really touched on, too, is like on lawn mowing, we did, I think we have, when we don't have enough people, you end up subcontracting that out. So, I mean, we end up spending money one way or the other. And I think by having the higher wage, I think, in talking with Dave, they, you know, there's several people that are returning, so obviously, you'd like to pay them a little bit more than a new hire with no experience to, like you said, it takes less training and supervision to get those people up and running and out on their own. So, like you said, it just allows a larger window to reward some of the returning people, but also have enough money to attract new people as well, so. So I think it's well warranted, and I was very critical that make sure whatever we do, it doesn't go into the union pay scale, because we want to be paying the seasonal people more than our full-time people, so.
Good, good point, Ron. Dave, you were right, but if I were the union, you're.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So we're good on it. So very much the reason, the reason we're doing this is because it's true, we're competing with, you know, with McDonald's, or people in the private sector, they're paying higher because of inflation. Inflation is, you know, a big factor here. So I talked to Adam and our Parks and Rec Director, and also Dave McKee about this, and I think that will be the right approach at this point. Anyone else who would like to say? Comments, no? Anyone from the public? When I come up front, state your name and address, please. Come to the podium. Thank you.
Sorry. Just a question after that. Eric Klein, 6486 East Lawn in Clarkston. Is there going to be a list of criteria that's going to specify the rate of wage? I just, in other words, I mean, is there, so if somebody comes in with two years of experience, they're going to be able to get the $20? Somebody else comes in new, they're only going to get the starting rate? So. Because I don't want to worry about that, because I know that there's, you know, potential for somebody going, why am I, why are they getting it and I'm not?
So that's part of the interview process. You know, we just, you know, we don't just hire people. Somebody come in, like say, you know, I used to own a landscaping company, and I don't want to do it anymore, and just want to do part-time, well, yeah. They're probably going to be a leader right away, and they're going to probably be maxed out.
Okay.
That's the decision, you know, we want to have that latitude with the department heads to make that decision on what that will start.
That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Just one more comment, I guess, the, speaking for, I guess I was speaking for DPW, but the Parks and Rec Department, you know, if they can't hire people, then that might affect what programs are offered during the summer months as well. So they might have to cut back on some of the offerings that they have or whatever. So I mean, it, I guess we, you know, to me, it's needed to make sure we, we can stay fully staffed and offer the amenities that we've had for many years, so.
You're right, Ron.
Yeah, Parks and Rec is the one that, Parks Recreation Seniors are the ones that really, they bring on an army of people, you know, way more than I do, or that Public Works does, but, so I can only imagine when me and the previous director, Derek Smith, was here, it was, it was tough then. You know, real tough, but we maintain the services. And, you know, we don't want to send full-time people to do these jobs, but I have, because there's an expectation, we're going to make things look good, so.
Ready to make a motion?
Yeah, I'm good with it. I mean, I've been in the construction business 30 years, I'm paying 20 bucks an hour for what I used to get for 12 to 14 bucks an hour. I mean, but you got to get the work done.
You do.
You're competing, none of it's fun work for the DP, you know, cutting grass isn't, you know, you can make a lot easier money than cutting grass, so. I, I trust the directors and their discretion. Certainly, I wouldn't be in favor of giving every part-time or 20 bucks an hour, and that's not what you're asking. And I appreciate you guys knowing what you need to make sure that we get the services that we need, so. I'm prepared to move to approve and cap the part-time seasonal employee pay scale for all township departments to no more than 20 an hour. All pay increases for part-time seasonal employees will follow current procedures and documentation requirements currently established by the township.
Support.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, everyone, appreciate it. Have a good night.
Good job, thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Next. Okay, yes, it is me, but Dan is going to make a presentation. But we met with Chief Pichet just the last couple weeks with Treasure Brown and Clerk Newbeck, and he brought some concerns for us that were very important, so we decided to work on it, and then they're bringing this to the board. This is, something that is important to keep our good services to our community. If you know, the fire department is part of our community, they provide, we provide premium services for our community, and that, Dan is going to make some resume about.
All right. Well, good evening. First of all, the current fire mileage will expire next, next December. We have our final collection this December. We do not have an election next year, and so it's been the decision of the Township Administration to put the fire mileage on the ballot beginning in August of this year. The current rate is 3.3716. The board, over the last couple of months, has received a significant amount of financial data input from the Budget and Finance Director, the Fire Department, and in particular, has reviewed a number of the increasing costs to fire, input from the Budget and Finance Director of the Fire Department, and in particular has, uh, reviewed, uh, a number of the increasing costs to fire, particularly as it relates to the equipment and vehicles, which is, in some cases, been 100% increase. There's also been labor costs, pension costs, and so the overall operation of the Fire Department has significantly increased, and the capital expenditures over the next couple of years have been summarized for the board, and, uh, that may include, uh, new buildings as well. So, as a result of that, my office prepared a number of options for the board in terms of millages. The packet includes option B, uh, which provides for a four-year millage increase rate of 3.8716. That would amount to approximately $100 for a 400,000 valued house. Do you guys have any questions with regard to the millage?
Questions from board members. Sam?
Well, I'll start us off, this is, you know, nobody wants to raise taxes and millages and all that, and I get that. I also, um, I've toured our fire stations, I've seen the conditions, we're making a big investment on citation. Competing with firefighters, uh, is a huge, uh, deal, um, we've got to be competitive. I'm going to say we looked at other options, leaving the millage the same, um, that doesn't really, uh, it doesn't meet the requirements. We're just digging ourselves into a hole. This is a small amount, and actually, leaving the millage the same or the increase is less than, um, $100 per 400,000 dollar home, uh, annually. And, um, uh, we all did a lot of deliberation on this and put a lot of time into making sure that we weren't asking the residents, uh, for money that we didn't need, and I don't believe that we are. I've got nothing but faith in our chief. Like I said, we've, I think we've all seen the investments we're making, the conditions that we've got, uh, the equipment that we need. In my opinion, um, this is the, the most modest way of keeping us, um, current and giving us the ability, to advance, grow, and, and stay as, uh, at the service level that I think our residents require. So those are my comments.
Treasure Brown?
So, I've always sort of been someone who sets everything else aside when it comes to math and look at numbers, and I always want to be able to prove numbers to myself. One of the things I think it's important for the, for our residents to understand is something that the union partnered with the board to do, uh, I think our last contract, and that was, we closed the defined benefit pension plan. And, and again, that was done in partnership with the union and the board. And what, and for so many communities out there, they have massive pension liabilities and they're not doing anything about it. And it's just, it's like kicking a can down the road, that at some point, it's going to be a big problem, but it's not going to be a big problem in Independence Township. And I, I, for a long time said, we need to, we need to keep the promise we make and stop making the promise. So we stopped making the promise, we now fully fund a new firefighter, we fully fund contributions to their 401K the year, that year, right? So that liability will never grow, it's done that year. I've always been concerned about our unfunded pension liability, and so I spent like the hour, half a day, trying to crunch numbers to look at the plan that's been put in place by the fire chief and his staff to resolve our unfunded liability, which is somewhere around $6 million. We have roughly $14 million already in the fund, we have some people retired, we'll have more people retire over the next 30 years, 25 years. And, and I crunched those numbers as best I could, and I tell you, it, it really is encouraging, I, chief, I didn't even get a chance to tell you this, that I'm very comfortable with what you've done, and it's basically, depending on what the market does, could have our unfunded liability paid off in 10 years, 12 years, even if I used a more moderate rate of return than MERS is typically getting. Even then, within 14 years, the contribution the township has to make goes to zero. The fund has enough in it to continue paying people who already retired and those who will retire, even, even though we will get to a point where no one else is contributing, because those people who participate in the plan will have all retired. And I think Ron looked at it with me, we stretched it way out to, what, 2080? Right, because we've got some young guys that are going to work another 30 years, and then they'll be alive another 30 years. And so, that gives me a lot of comfort, that, that the, the Fire Department is doing the best they can. And the fact that we don't have a defined benefit plan anymore, some people will look at that as a negative as far as trying to come here. It's that much more important that we have to have the best equipment, the best training, the best facilities, because that's the trade-off. And so, uh, I, the other thing I want to point out is that if you look at how we collect money, the Fire Department is, is number one, it's, it's nearly half of what we collect in your taxes that funds our Fire Department. And I'll tell you something, you don't think about it until you need it, I probably had six runs to my mom's house in the last two years, either, either from helping her out of the tub, picking her up off the floor, or rushing her to the hospital after a stroke. Those are the things that count for our residents, and I have no problem seeing this increase happen, we all know inflation's there. And I'm very confident, and I have a lot of trust, the Fire Department's going to do the best they can with the dollars they've got. So I'm going to support, uh, the option to increase it.
Okay. It was, oh, Ron? Oh, Carrie?
Okay, I'll go, I, I was going to say, in today's packet, uh, if you look at it, uh, every month, the, the chief puts a report, or the Fire Department puts a report into the, uh, into the system, it shows you all the runs and all the activity that the Fire Department does. And, uh, if you've monitored this, uh, over, over time, uh, the number of runs that the township's making has been increasing, you know, dramatically. And most of those are medical runs versus, uh, uh, fire or even accident runs, they're probably poor medical, uh, opportunities, so. So some of the things with the, uh, the senior housing and stuff that we have, uh, that's increased the number of the runs. Those senior houses, I guess, I don't want to badmouth them, you know, those senior houses, if you look on even, uh, Kim's list that she handed out tonight, there were several of those, uh, senior homes that are, uh, the top taxpayer in the township as well, so. They're paying in fair share, but they also are using, are, are putting a burden on our, uh, facilities as well, so. I guess, you know, we need to, you know, we've added, uh, uh, equipment over time, but we've also improved the equipment. We went like in the Fire Department, uh, and, uh, we had the powered lifts now, where, uh, it used to be the firefighters had to pick the, the people up, like one on each side. Maybe it's a 300-pound person, putting them in the, uh, medical facility and everything, now we have powered lifts. And hopefully, we, you know, we've had firefighters with bad backs and, you know, other injuries and that going on, so. So, you know, a lot of what we're doing is, you know, not only to have good equipment, but also have, uh, safer equipment for our Fire, uh, Department to operate as well, so. So I think, uh, you know, I'm in favor of supporting this, just because, you know, I think we need to keep improving, keep, uh, uh, you know, not ignoring, uh, the costs that are out there. And, uh, and I, I guess, just talking about the millage in, in general, the current millage has been being reduced because of Headley. So every year it goes down like, you know, part, you know, a tenth of a mill or so, so, uh, so even, uh, you know, uh, the increase we're asking for is, you know, barely putting it back above where we, we started out at, so.
Good point. Carrie?
Sort of going to say the same thing that Paul had said. Talking of, I mean, although the pension is a very huge factor in here, I think most residents can really relate to calls. If you haven't had to have someone come to your home, you have a friend, a neighbor, or family member who has, and I think that speaks volumes to people. Just to give you something, um, relatively time-wise, back in 2002, our firefighters responded to just over 2,000 calls. As of last year, they were responding to over 4,000 calls, but what's even more important to me in that is it's with the same number of staffing, we've had 10 firefighters back in 2002, and we still have 10 today. We're working to be staffed, we will have 11, uh, by the end of this year, but with this millage, it will help to bring us up to where we can have 12. And you don't want to be the person or your family member where, you know, they have a lot of, uh, as chief has told us, concurrent calls. So, we can be, you know, we've got the three fire stations, we've got three men on shift, three men and women. They can be called out to two concurrent calls, we only have one, um, fire station that's left to respond to the rest of the township. And when you want that call answered for your loved one or for your life or whatever, your home, you know, that, that plays into that. So you have maybe only two or three people that can respond, and then at that point, we're all called out. So, that speaks volumes to me. We want to support our Fire Department, who supports us, correct? I mean, that's, that's what's keeping us going, and it's important to me that I think that we stand behind, we, we have a wonderful chief that, uh, in partnership with our business manager, has given us, um, provided a capital improvement plan that stretches out some, somewhat even over 10 years, just to give you another idea. He has a rotation plan for replacing our fire trucks, our ladder trucks, our rescue vehicles. In 2019, we purchased one for 530,000, I mean, that's a big enough amount there to even try to comprehend. If we were to order that again today, it would be over a million dollars, and that was just in 2019. And so, as I'm sure the board collectively feels we don't want to raise taxes, we're paying the taxes ourselves as well. We don't want to raise taxes, but you get what you pay for, and I feel that we have an excellent Fire Department, and we only want to maintain what we have and even give them an opportunity to be better, so I am in favor of, um, the increase. That's all.
Jim?
Yeah, I'll just be brief, um, I agree with many of the comments already made. You know, certainly inflation is, is rampant, um, very little we can do here at the local level. There are certain services, um, maintaining your vehicle, groceries, police and fire are integral to our everyday, and yes, we all have those experiences, we've unfortunately had to rely upon them in that rare moment. And so, um, you know, and being appreciative of Chief Pichet and being a good steward of resident dollars and seeing how, how fiscally conservative he is, and knowing that also, we're a, we're a conservative community, but I've also seen where the value proposition exists, that the residents are willing to step up, and, and that last backstop is the residents will have an opportunity to vote on this, and will be able to affirm or reject what we're recommending tonight.
Thank you, Jim. So then, so what we're talking about tonight, and we're going to be, if we approve this, what we approve is the language that's going to be in, in, in the ballot for the primaries? Okay. We know voting to raising taxes, we just approving a language to vote there?
Yes, the voters will.
Voters will decide whether if they want to have a gray services premium or, you know, or we're going to be struggling with the
Yes.
some of the inflation, there's a, it's a problem not just in our township, it's across the board, it's across the country. There's no, a lot of fire station or other organization that suffer of this, so, okay, I just want to clarify that.
Yep.
But good point, Jim, Ron, Paul, and Ron, good point, by the way. All right, um, any, anyone online that would like to make a comment? Anyone, no? I guess we are ready to make a motion, I think, um. Sam? Okay, Carrie?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution to approve the Charter Township of Independence Fire and Emergency Services Operation Millage, authorizing a tax levy of up to 3.8716 mills for a period of four years, beginning with the December 2025 levy, and authorize the township clerk to certify the resolution and submit the appropriate ballot language for inclusion on the August 6th, 2024 general election ballot.
Support.
Okay. It's a roll call.
Let's see if there's any comments.
Any other comments? No? Okay. Motion has made, and a second, and we're ready for a roll call. Okay.
Trustee Morocco?
Yes.
Trustee Naomothu?
Yes.
Trustee Richie?
Yes.
Trustee Tutter?
Yes.
Supervisor Aliaga?
Yes.
Clerk Newbeck, yes, and Treasurer Brown?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay. 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 Communication, future agenda reports, we have a report of building department activity on April 2024. Second, report, report, Fire Department, October 2023, report of Fire Department, November 2023, report of Fire Department, December 2023, report of Fire Department, January 2024, minutes of information, technology oversight committee, March 2024, minutes of the video center administration board, February 2024, and communication, State of Michigan, adult foster care facility, Islam manner, and board member comments.
I just want to remind everybody again, in the, in the packet, they should look at the December 2023 Fire Department, uh, report, because it'll have a whole year's worth of statistics on there on how many runs they made and, uh, uh, you know, some of the activities that they, they take place during the year. So, I mean, it's, it gives you a good whole year overview, if anybody's interested.
Thank you. Okay. Any a motion to adjourn?
Some.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, everyone.